But Councilmember Hagley is absent, although we expect him here any minute. He's coming back from the airport. So with that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes or deletions or additions to the agenda?
There are none.
Move for approval?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda's approved. Can I get an approval for minutes of September 18th, 2017, regular meeting? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Okay, we have no announcements and presentations, so I'll move to item number three. Council reports on matters of interest occurring since the previous meeting. Who'd like to go first? Vice Mayor Manziel, go ahead.
I'd like to start. Yeah, I just want to say I'm so proud of our city, and I feel privileged, very fortunate, to live in Healdsburg this last week, last two weeks, but last week I want to comment mainly on and express just how much gratitude I have for our staff and our neighborhoods and people that have been continuing to keep us safe and healthy. The legacy of hard work, community service, and stewardship inspires me and guides me. And since Monday morning, when that big fire alarm went off for a lot of people, our city staff, each member demonstrated his or her commitment to our public. Chief Burke, Chief Boas, Director Themig, wow, the evacuations, displacements, the thorough, professional, convivial community center made me so proud and relieved me of my concern. What are we doing as a city, an affluent city, a city rich in abundance, a city rich in intelligence and compassion and heartfulness? And I just want to mention that gratitude before we start and also say, I was here all week. I left the city limits once to go down to my high school, Maria Creo in East Santa Rosa, and I'm just really wanting to make sure everyone hears that I really appreciate how much city manager, assistant city manager, city clerk, all of you, all the directors, just really want to thank you because it was effortless to just know that we had good, solid people here, that we're going to support what we needed done. And I'm going to be part of the rebuilding and transitioning of Sonoma County and specifically looking at where I worked for 35 years and get schools started is one of the things I've been working on, housing for teachers. But I just want to mention that no matter what, I think that this unaffected city, and I don't mean unaffected like we don't care, but I mean, we really were blessed. I hope we continue to look at what we can do to support our neighbors. This morning, I was at the county offices with members of different groups from different municipalities, and Linda Hopkins was leading a discussion about housing. And she made a comment, and I'll end with this. She said, this is a, basically, it's, there's no zones anymore. It's like, we're here together, it's Sonoma County. So I hope that our city sees that, I know we do, and we're going to be there for the rest of all the people that have had some real devastation outside our city limits. So thank you, everybody, for the work you've done. Thank you so much for being there, and I know that we have to talk about that later in the agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gold?
Well, I'd like to echo the Vice Mayor's appreciation for the long hours and excellent work put in by staff members and also by the many volunteers that felt called to contribute to this effort. It's been a tense and a tragic week. I don't think that there's anyone in this room who hasn't, doesn't have a friend or a relative who has lost their home or their business or perhaps even their life. And we in Healdsburg went from trying to support evacuees as best we could to preparing to evacuate ourselves, which was a very traumatic process. And even though I was appreciative of having that opportunity to choose some practical items and choice mementos, that other people didn't have that chance, I was very aware of that, but still an emotionally draining experience. I tried to be stoic, like I think probably everyone did, and remain practical. And, but when I went to the farmer's market Saturday morning, I just burst into tears because soon as I saw those farmers there bringing their goods to market as they always have and as I hope they always will from all over Sonoma County, that's when I finally felt safe and that we were going to make it through this and that our, our community was going to continue. Moving on from that, I don't want to ignore another major volunteer effort. Back in those halcyon days, prior to October 8th, I attended the celebration for the new fountain at Oak Grove Cemetery. And if you haven't been up there, it's pretty phenomenal. When I first saw Oak Grove in the early 90s, it was so abandoned and overgrown, it looked like a Hollywood movie set, like cue the bats and the distant howling of wolves. I was kind of astonished that this was where so many, you know, pioneering families were laid to rest. But this really dedicated group of volunteers have cleared out all the brush, they've cleared out the poison oak, they've trimmed back the trees, and then finally, they rebuilt this beautiful 19th century fountain involving plumbing and electricity and masonry and landscaping and replicating the original sculpture from the top of the fountain. So it was an amazing effort led by Jim Drysback and contributed to by so many professionals, tradesmen who contributed their labor. And I encourage you to go up and check it out because it's a very beautiful, peaceful place in the center of our town. It's a lovely spot.
Thank you. Councilmember Neokas?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, of course, I'll echo the sentiments about the appreciation for the city's efforts. I was really, spent the better part of Monday at the evacuation center and from, really from 8:00 AM in the morning, you know, from the get-go and I hope I wasn't underfoot. I want to say that to the staff. But I was thoroughly impressed with the professionalism, with the dedication that the staff had and the, and like, I really, there was a warmth to the, to the, to the welcome that we gave to those people in need, and I felt it. And I talked to the people, the evacuees, and it was really impressive. And I think, yes, we, we were blessed by not having that, and I think we have a lot, we, as a community, have a huge amount to offer to the rest of the county in this rebuilding effort. And I think that, that we should look at this, at that evacuation center, it's kind of like the launchpad from where we can move. The amount of volunteers in particular, and there's just, it's kind of overwhelming, the number of people who've stepped up and people, individuals, and businesses who've stepped up and many of them without, without saying a word, without saying, without any sort of fanfare of what they're trying to do, they're just doing it because that's what the community is all about, was a, was a really invigorating experience. So I think really, I'm happy to, I'll be joining the conversation about, about the community-wide website clearinghouse for data. My company's going to be helping out with that, so I'm really excited to join that, to be counted among those volunteers. It's an honorable crew. And the other thing I wanted to say is, there was a, and there's, I'm sure there's, there's a lot more, I want, a lot more thoughts, but I'm going to wait for the presentation from the city, from the staff. I will say this, there was some really good news on the legislative front, and I think this is a very interesting lesson for going forward. If you recall, AB 649 was this bill, this horrible bill that the telecom industry was pushing us to basically, essentially saying, you know, cities, you have no, you have no right to have any sort of local control over the placement of equipment on cell towers. It's really just like a, a bad, bad, bad bill. And the, with a lot of effort among cities and legislators, we stood our ground and were able finally to convince Governor Brown to be, to not to return the bill unsigned, essentially not, you know, sign the bill into law. I, I say that, I make that point for today because I think going forward, there are, there will be some legislative changes that will, that we, that will, that will be helpful when, in this recovery effort. And I think it's super important to realize, we do have very, a good amount of power and influence, not just at the state level, but at the federal level, and there's, there's a lot of opportunities to strike while the iron is hot, to get these things changed. And I think there's, I'm optimistic that as we see these, these opportunities, that we will be able to seize them. So that's, I'll close on that.
Thank you. So on the, on the 3rd of this month, I attended the Friends of the Healdsburg Library Board Meeting, of which I'm a member, and we, there was an art show on wine advertising from the previous century and beyond that the library had, has some trouble with because a lot of the items were worth a lot of money collectively, about $150,000. And we were able to convince the person, you know, Beau Simons and I, working on it, and other folks, to convince the person who owns the art to get his own policy to cover it and hold the library harmless. And so everybody was really excited that that, that was able to go on, but it turns out, it never really happened. On the 5th, I visited Mrs. Peterite's second grade class. This is kind of a tradition that I do every year, and they just put me through a Q and A about, you know, what's your favorite color, what's your favorite animal, you know, why did you want to be the mayor, and how do you get to be on the council, and all that kind of stuff? And that's a lot of fun, and it's interesting because second graders are at that perfect age where they're just so inquisitive, and I really look forward to doing that. So that was, that was interesting. And then on the 7th, I went to the fire department, open house, and, you know, our, our fire department put on a great open house with live demonstrations and handing out information about fire safety. And then on Sunday evening, we took off for Lake County and handed some fire safety pamphlets to the kids in the backseat. So that's what they were reading on the way up to Lake County, and we got the word in the middle of the night that, you know, everything that was going down went down, and we ended up staying at another night, came back, and, you know, I wanted to stay and kind of ride it out, but as soon as the, the call to evacuate came, even though it was for a different part of Healdsburg, the rest of my family had nothing of it. So we ended up going to the Mendocino Coast where the air was fresh and nice, and we rented a nice house, and we hosted other families from the area for games of baseball and, you know, dinner and roasting hot dogs, stuff like that, just to make the kids feel like this was a vacation, not an evacuation. So when we came back, I got to see all the work that had been done by the staff and the volunteers in this community that is just amazing, and I have confidence that it's going to continue. You know, this is, this is who we are, and I think that you'll see in the weeks and months and years to come that this is the point when we really start to shine and show our true colors to everybody, and I have, I have a lot of faith in everything. So I just want to give thanks to everybody in the staff, and I especially want to thank our communications outreach director, Rea Borja, fabulous job. You know, getting that firsthand information out to the people is so important because when you have a situation like this and you get, start getting second, third, fourth-hand information, it kind of feeds into a sort of hysteria. But when you have this information being pushed out so efficiently by the city, I think it really calms people down, and it makes a lot more people have the real information so that they can say, no, 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 this is the real stuff. I'm not going to, I'm not going to buy into that, that hysteria. So although it was, you know, there's a lot of people that were a lot less fortunate than we were, I just, I think that the staff from the city manager on down did a great job. So, thank you. With that, we don't have any city manager reports, so I'll open it up to public comments on non-agenda items. This time is set aside for the public on matters of general interest that are not on the agenda but related to city council business. Speakers, please limit their time to three minutes, and if there's something on the consent calendar that you'd like to talk about, make that be known, and we'll poll us and see if we're going to talk about it. So, welcome, Tim.
Thank you very much. Wonderful words on the part of everybody, and certainly the expression never does justice to the experience that we all just went through. I have three points I'd like to make. I have three points that I'd like to make briefly. One, I sent a letter to the council this weekend with a suggestion, with a suggestion which always has the city's interest at heart. Sometimes I push the envelope a bit, but I do think pushing the envelope is constructive. And I wanted to thank Leah and David and Bridgette and Joe for your personal reply, for taking the time and making those thoughtful comments. Thank you very much. Secondly, keeping with bringing ideas and sometimes being a little bit controversial, certainly the occurrences that have happened in the last week with the tragedy of the fire may cause us to act and think differently. One of the things we might want to consider is clawing back the decision that was made on the public, on the professional services agreement for the Healdsburg Avenue North to Powell study that was close to 500K. Maybe that money might be able to be spent a little bit differently and more focused manner in light of the things that we've just experienced. Lastly, Sean, I think your words about communication are just right on the money. I can't tell you how much better I personally felt knowing that I was seeing quality information, and kudos goes to Rea Borja and Maria and Sean, who I personally had contact with Sean, and the job that they all did was sensational, having managed a number of crises myself at the business level, first rate. And I know they really, really contributed largely to the community being able to take a breath and feel like they're getting quality information, which, like you said, can help minimize the hysteria. So thank you to those three from me personally.
Thank you. Ken, welcome.
Ken Bukanyani, Portone Lane. I have a few things I want to talk about. As the gentleman just said, why are we spending all this money on the study of North Healdsburg Avenue? What's the big deal? Just pave it and put a bike lane in there. Why are we spending so much money on that thing? And then another one, I heard that the GHD engineers are requesting an additional $900,000 for the roundabout? Is that true? And if it is, why? And another thing, we on Portone Lane, I've been waiting two years for our rainwater problem to be corrected. We would like to know when and how this problem is going to be solved. The people that are running this town, you better wise up. I mean, you should be embarrassed and ashamed of what's going on in this town. And another thing, Sean, Mayor and leader of Healdsburg, as you stated, you enjoyed Mendocino. That was great. While we slept in our street clothes, hoping that houses wouldn't burn down. I understand about safety and what's family, as you stated on Facebook. I took my 96-year-old mother safely out of town and then returned home to my community to assist my neighborhood with, should anyone need help. You being the mayor, I just don't understand why you weren't in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with a comment on a non-agenda item? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, all of you. I wrote some notes so that I don't get lost here. The utter heartbreak this past week brings what was already a housing crisis and shortage back into vivid focus. How many here wish that they had a spare room or a garage or a granny unit that they could share with someone who lost their house? Let's look forward rather than criticize what hasn't been accomplished. The city has made it easier for people with means to build ADUs. So now is the time to look at serving those who aren't wealthy so they can build additional rental units in our town. Now is the time to make well-designed garage conversions legal. I don't know if you're aware, but approximately 30% of our community track homes that were built in the 1960s, 70s, 80s on shallow lots with prominent front garages, you can't legally do a granny unit because of the rules of our garage conversions. So now is the time to make that, to change that rule and make it possible. Any of you on the council, the staff, or in the public who are ready now to take a serious, proactive leadership role on changing these rules and building infill additional rental units to our community, please contact Gimby. I will leave some business cards for you with a phone number on it. We will meet you anytime, anywhere. We have ideas, we've written them out, and we're happy to share our information and our research with you. Please contact us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else with a comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and move on to the consent calendar.
Mayor, with the exception of one item, I'd like to approve the consent. I'd like to pull, sorry, I'm looking, it's just...
Considering there's only one item on the consent calendar...
Oh, pardon me. Okay, thanks, Mayor. Thanks for your support. So, A, yeah, the only one, sorry. Thank you.
Welcome, Councilmember Hagley, back from Nebraska. Let the record show that Councilmember Hagley has showed up at 6:21 PM.
Yes, yeah, I don't support without opening that item. I would like to open that item. So I move to open, or what would be it if there's only one? Mayor, what's the language?
Is there, is there anyone else who would like to pull and discuss this item?
I have a few questions.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I guess we'll, you want to, that's fine. You do want to pull it?
No. I'm okay with pulling it, yes.
Okay, so we'll discuss that item then.
If I could ask Director Salmy a brief review of the item and answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Director Salmy.
Mayor and council. This item is the approval of final map for the Farm Stand subdivision. The tentative map for this was approved by the city council March 7th of 2016. This approval is a ministerial action. The final map is in conformance with the tentative map, and that's why it's been brought forward at this time for council's approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Well, I'm kind of coming a little bit late to the party because I wasn't on the council during the previous review, so I just had a few questions. This is a mixed-use zoning. Is there any commercial element to this plan?
The, the mixed-use zoning is the lots that front on Grove Street. Then, and that's why the public alley is in place, that, so the concept is that if one of the people or one of the buyers of one of those lots wants to do a mixed use, then the access for the commercial portion or the house, depending on how they want to do it, would be off the alley. The Grove Street neighborhood plan does not support driveways along Grove Street, so basically all, most all of the access would be taken off that public alley.
And these are, I think, 30 units, is that correct? Not about nine acres? And how many of those are inclusionary?
15%, which would be five or four or five, depending on how we, whether we take the units or the in-lug for the half.
And is, is there any plan for accessory dwelling units on any of the larger lots?
It's my understanding that the, the developer intends to build all the infrastructure and then sell the individual lots, so I can't say that there's a requirement for...
I see. So we don't actually know what kind of structures are going to end up being on the lots at this stage?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, do we have the other map that I've been looking at that has the roundabout in there by chance?
That's actually...
Is that an old one?
No, that's actually the construction drawing. That it is, the roundabout was part of the approval of the tentative map. It is shown on the actual construction drawings.
This one?
Correct.
Is there any way to put that on the screen so I can see the visual of that? Because I'm just curious about one thing. Is that possibly to send it to our city clerk, the one that I got off the website for this project? Is there a way to put it on the screen for the public to see? So my question is, what are the implications of this final map? What about allocations with our GMO? How is that going to go? And I don't know if anyone can answer that. I just have a responsibility to ask that because, as we all know, I just talked about housing, and I just listened this morning at the county, and so my question is really rooted in, what does this mean for our future for not only that piece of land, but also what are the ramifications of allotting this? I know that it's a ministerial or whatever the word is, that we're just going to stamp this, but my concern is that I don't know if we, we all understand the implications of that being the final map. What are the rights for these property owners? In other words, they haven't put forth any building structure images. So kind of going along with ADUs and thinking about being creative with density and looking at these very large lots, I was just curious if these, if this particular subdivision would be under any kind of umbrella of guidelines for, for planning that could support our housing quest in this town to get more rental property and also to get more property that would be not just for people at a certain income level. So you had mentioned three or four inclusionaries. I, I read three or four inclusionary, not five, so I just wanted to make...
Four and a half, so...
Yeah, okay. But one of them's going to be moderate, and the other three are very low, is what I read. So I just wondered if that's, that's true, because that's, I read the project. And then the other question is, what are the ramifications of this in terms of our GMO? I think you suggested, and maybe someone in this room knows because they're part of the project, what, what would actually be the process of developing these? Is it just going to be two at a time? And if that's the case, there's no vision for the neighborhood, it's just whoever buys it gets to build what they want. And I was just wondering about that. I know it's too late, I've been told that, that this map has to be, you know, it's, it's a right, but I just want to caution everybody, I want no part of a process that doesn't think about the design and what we need in this community right now, which is housing for people and rentals. And not knowing so much of it, I just want on record right now that I'm curious and I want to make sure our city is aware of what's going on so that we don't open something up and then look back and wish that we had paid more attention to the process and the allocations that are going to go toward this project, which could be potentially 26, right? Because there's 30 lots. I mean, this is just what I read off the website. So I'm just trying to, I just want to be really clear before I consent item, yea, that this is a project that is a pretty big project. And if we're going to just sell off twosies and allow people to do what they want in terms of building, I'm concerned about the cohesiveness of the project and how it reflects what we, I think, have been doing in the last year and a half, which is looking at housing in a different way than letting people do whatever they want, but actually having some guidelines for planning design that still need to be approved by our planning commission. And also, we've been talking about ADUs for two years, so it'd be really sweet to see more ADUs. So those are my questions. What about the ramifications of this project? What does it mean for our housing? How can we assure that the people that come in and buy these properties from the people that own this subdivision, that they're going to adhere to standards that would be beneficial for our community right now? And also, design review, what does that mean? So those are all my questions, and I'm glad they're on the record.
So I think two different items, frankly, Vice Mayor Manziel. I think what's in front of us is the approval of, of the map on March 7th, I believe, at my front of council, the tentative map did, and so I think the action is, is this in conformance with what in front of, with what went in front of council on the 7th and, and the planning commission the previous November? I think that's what the item is. I think the concerns you have with regards to the GMO and the impacts are obviously real and significant. Unfortunately, this item here is just contemplating the final map. So I'm not sure how to respond to the GMO conversation other than, then I think that's one of the primary tasks of the CHC, unfortunately, they're... Unfortunately, their meeting was canceled this past Monday because of the, because of what was happening in Santa Rosa. We're hoping to reschedule that as soon as possible, hopefully this Monday if we can get everybody there. But that is one of the first two things they will be looking at, is the GMO policies and procedures, which would dictate how those allocations are allocated. So then again, how those allocations are distributed.
City manager, are you suggesting that the Community Housing Committee is going to be working on how to allocate the, the GMO units that are maybe attributed or put forth to this project? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So one of the, one of the things that, there's, there's a number of tasks the council has tasked the CHC, Community Housing Committee, with. One of those is to look at the, one of the first two things is to look at and adopt, hopefully, the housing action plan. And the second item is to take a look at the GMO allocation policies and procedures. And what that does is it dictates how those allocations, those, those 90 over a three-year period on a, on an average of 30 per year, how those items are distributed. And so there was a lot of discussion during the Measure R, leading up to Measure R, which had a focus on how those allocations would be utilized based on product type and so forth and so on. It was my understanding that the CHC will take up that conversation at their next meetings with regards to how those allocations shall be distributed through the policies and procedures process. And then once they do that, that will then come back to council, and council would review what the recommendation is and make any, make any changes to it before that resolution will be adopted.
Is it your understanding that this planning commission is going to be meeting soon to adopt the planning design agreements, or not agreements, but the new planning standards for the city of Hillsburg that we have been working on to implement and actually see to the action step of giving them to developers for their building?
So I think you're referring to the design guidelines. So I know my, our interim planning and building director is working on setting up a joint meeting between council and the planning commission with the consultant we've hired to look at design guidelines and, and walk through the process with them and then come back at a later date and hopefully have those design guidelines adopted by council.
My question, so when you say mixed use in the front, which I know it's all amorphous now because we're just going to try to sell it, or it's, it's all about, it's not like it's a cohesive project might be, we don't know. But approving this map, then that could be retail in the front on Grove Street in front of, I mean, it potentially has the right to be retail. So you could see a store on that street across from the skate park? I mean, there could be retail there because it's mixed use?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could add one thing about this development. In the early 2000s, the city adopted a specific plan, which was the Grove Street neighborhood plan. And that was what set the, the zoning along the Grove Street frontages mixed use and the vision for how is these, the properties along Grove Street were to be developed. This plan is in conformance with that specific plan. So it's, it's something that, that the city desired, council approved or adopted. And so this is, um, like I said, it's in conformance with that plan, so...
Vice Mayor Newokis?
Right. So I think maybe to summarize, what we're approving is, is, is the division of these, of this big piece into smaller chunks. And then once we, once it's divided in smaller chunks, we're going to get development proposals for those smaller chunks that will be controlled by, by the GMO and the allocation policies and procedures that our CHC is going to be refining, right? So these, these, these parcels will be subject to those new policies and procedures, correct?
Any new policies and procedures that council adopts? Any, any project that hasn't come? Yes, yes. I'm overcomplicating the answer, but the answer is yes.
To this particular, yeah. Okay, thank you. Does that...
So the, right now, the GMO allocations have As and Bs, right? And so the As are for larger projects, and then there's a certain amount that are set aside for smaller projects, the so-called B allocations. And so one of the things that we asked the, the CHC to look at was, how efficiently are we using that, those allocations? There might even be a C allocation. I don't, yeah, no. Only As and Bs. So this would be something where, since it's divided already, they would be B allocations in today's rules.
City manager, who's in charge of rating A and B? It had to do with the value of whether or not it was more units? Is that how we got an A versus a B rating? I'm just curious how that works. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, council members. Mayor, so just for clarification, the GMO ordinance specifies a category. A allocation actually is if it's four or fewer lots or units. And anything over that quantity, so five or more, would then go in the category B. The way the GMO is currently set up, category As, there are 10 allocations a year, and category B, there are 20, for a total of 30 per year. And then we roll the cycle in three years, so that adds up to 30 per year, no more than 90 in a, you can do the math, give me my math, no more than 90 in a three-year cycle. So just, I just wanted to provide clarification on the, what the As and the Bs were. Does that help?
So, so this one would be A allocations in today's...
This would be B allocations because it's more than five, yeah, five lots.
To clarify, 20 a year for Bs. So potentially, they could get 20 allocations from our GMO because it's a B project?
So we keep an allocation table of projects that are already in the queue. And so, for example, for this year, we only have, in terms of what's left for category B allocations, we have four left. The planning director at the end of the year does have the discretion to take any leftover category A allocations and move those into B if there's a project that is able to take that. So we have seven right now in 2017 in the category A. But, but we, we, in terms of moving forward with an actual project, this project would, in the big picture, this project would take at least three years to phase in through allocations because our current GMO ordinance, unless things change, only allow a particular development project to have 10 allocations per, per year cycle. So even if we move things around, that would be 10 for, you know, the end of 2017. And then they would need at least 24 allocations, the way I do the math on their project, so... And that assumes nothing else comes in ahead of, ahead of their project.
And just to clarify, Director DeRosa, so, but if they did decide, the owners of this property, the LLC that owns this property, Farm Stand LLC, do they have the right to take two at a time and just basically execute that way? So in other words, they're going to say, we want to build two of them, we're selling two out, and then another three months go by, and then another two? I mean, is it, is it possible that they can actually just create their community that way where it goes that, that incrementally to?
They could, but they would run the risk that if they only take two allocations, that another tentative, final map that comes in in the next year that's ready also to go forward for category B could, you know, put them behind in line, so to speak.
This is what I call transparency in government, because I just learned some things, and I appreciate your patience. I needed to know because I was on the Community Housing Committee, and I still didn't understand this. And this was the reason I couldn't support Measure R. I wasn't sure how things like this were going to manifest in terms of taking up allocations away from maybe a potential market rate house that would have other things. But this does have inclusionary housing. I'm excited to see what's going to happen, but I know this is all procedural. Thank you for the information.
I'll gladly entertain a motion. Sorry. I believe I opened this to the public during the, the non-agenda item. I asked about... Ice, okay, I'll take some public comment on this. Come on up.
Bruce Abramson, Hillsburg. I was on the, I'm on the Community Housing Committee right now. And our, one of our objectives here, the second objective here, and our plan, was to encourage and facilitate private development of secondary dwelling units, SDUs, but ADUs, in order to more efficiently use existing infrastructure, create opportunities for seniors, et cetera. We had a goal of 125 by 2022. When I saw this farm stand here, I said to myself, why aren't ADUs a part of this proposal? Why isn't there an amendment to this final map or some other procedure that would help encourage that? If you look at this map, there are seven lots on Grove Street that are 12,000 square feet and larger. You have four in the back that are 19,000 square feet. What is the issue with that? Our goal is to help increase housing and affordable housing if possible here. So I would ask that the council consider asking for an amendment to increase or to add, have ADUs on 24 units here and send it back to the planning commission, to the developer, have them look at it, if that's within your power. I'm not sure, but that's, that would be one request. The other has to do with the allocations. We haven't had meetings for two months. This is on our agenda. It's been on our agenda. So I think it's proper to potentially postpone this approval process until our committee meets and decides on the allocation procedure that we'll recommend to council. You'll make the final decision, but there are a number of us have been thinking of ADUs as a possible way to help with, you know, for allocation A and allocation B. If there are 30 units a year for the next six years, that's 180 units. If we could get every market rate unit that's being built here, that's not an apartment or condominium, to consider or to have an ADU, we will help both the city, we'll help the developer, we'll help a whole series of people right there. So my request is to maybe, is to pull this, not approve it, or request an amendment so we have ADUs on this property. And if you can't do that, then at least postpone it so that we meet and then get this program going. This is what you asked us to do. So why can't we do it? That's what I'm requesting.
Richard, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Richard Berg, Fitch Street. I, I'm not understanding this conversation. It seems to me that the map allows a landowner to create lots. allocations are not made until a building permit is submitted. And if I understand what you're voting on, it's the map, and there is absolutely nothing about allocations there. The question I have is, are specific lots designated as inclusionary? Can't see it on the map, I haven't been paying attention, so I don't know if that's a reasonable question or not.
I'll, I'll answer that question after all the public comment. Thanks, Richard. Yes, Arielle, welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Arielle Kelly, and I live on Grove Street. I live just nearby this property. And I'm concerned that it doesn't seem like there has been a lot of outreach regarding what is going on. When you talk to neighbors on Grove Street, there's a lot of, yeah, I heard that was before the city council a year or so ago, but it kind of seems like the project's dead. There's people saying, oh, yeah, it's no longer moving forward. There, no one knows what's going on. And I think that that's really troubling just based on the neighborhood and what type of impact this particular consent item or what was formerly a consent item would have in our neighborhood. And I think that, you know, you're seeing mixed use or potentially retail-focused property facing Grove Street, which I agree is consistent with the plan that was developed, I think, a decade ago for this spot. I'm, I'm sorry, on the date. But it seems like, given the amount of development that's currently happening on Grove Street, what is currently being built now, what's already been allocated with the apartment, the affordable housing apartments, the seven lots that are just to the south of this that are in the process of being built, we're seeing an extreme amount of residential investment in this area. And we're not seeing retail, we're not seeing commercial. I understand that we have Sagacio Winery and their farmer warehouse that is directly across the street from where I live. I see them every day, and I understand why we have mixed use on Grove Street. But to create a subdivision map that basically says, we know we can't build 30 houses because we can't get that approved, let's go ahead and put commercial here or put retail here. It doesn't fit with the character of what's currently happening in the neighborhood. And unfortunately, because this project has kind of been, this map was put forward a year ago, and it went to planning, I think, last November. Sorry, I'm not clear on the dates. Things have changed, like, things have changed within the last week. We know our housing needs have only exponentially grown in the last week, let alone what's happened since last November. So I urge you guys to just make sure that we're doing smart planning, that we're doing consistent planning with what's really happening on the ground. And I think that we need to give our planning department and director stronger directives and tools to help manage good planning for our community. I'm going to walk by this thing every day, several times a day, and I want it to be great for our neighborhood. And I'm really worried that it doesn't feel like that's what's happening here. And I think that just more outreach and communication with our residents would be a huge step in the right direction. And again, thank you for what you do. I know this is not, the allocation conversation is a separate conversation, but this is, you know, really going to transform that part of town that's already going under a huge transformation right now. And so let's keep moving it in the right direction, and I'm not sure this is it.
Tim, welcome.
Thank you. So I don't really know whether or not this is a fait accompli or a done deal and what kind of latitude you have to legally direct a change. What I do know is possible is punting on the vote and having a meeting with the people who are developing this and ask them to do the right thing for what's in the best interest of the community. I would bet that whoever is behind the Shell Corporation or the Shell LLC are people who are longstanding tenure in the community, and they may even be willing to be more flexible about what's being done here. All you have to do is ask them and see if they'll do the right thing. Clearly, what Ms. Kelly just stated, this is a new world today. In one week, the world is a completely different place. Our microcosm is a completely different place. We need to act accordingly. And sometimes people will step up to do the right thing. All you have to do is ask them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll bring it back for further discussion and...
Mr. Mayor, could I chime in here?
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to comment on two items that were raised by the public. First, consistent with the Subdivision Map Act and your own municipal code, the question that is before the council this evening, because this is an item to approve a final map, is whether or not the final map is in substantial conformance with the tentative map. Questions about what the tentative map looks like are really questions that need to be raised and considered at the approval of the tentative map. So substantively, the question before the council was pretty narrow this evening. Your discretion here is extremely narrow at this stage in the proceedings. Procedurally, is in terms of whether you can continue the item, your municipal code answers that question as well. It indicates that the council shall consider. That means you have no option. You shall consider the final map at the first regular meeting following the transmission of the final map and recommendation from the Public Works Director. And I've just conferred with Director Salmy here. And my understanding is that meeting is this meeting. So my understanding is that you, you shall consider this item at this meeting.
Our consideration is whether this complies with the tentative map. Is that the consideration?
That's correct.
And the Public Works Director has stated that this does comply with the tentative map?
That's correct. In fact, the, the map, subdivision map act, as well as our own municipal code, designates the Public Works Director as the person who, who looks at the tentative map, looks at the final map, and makes the decision on substantial conformance.
Okay. I have a few comments just because this is something that has come through this body as long as I've been on it. It came in after I started, and I've been looking at this from when it was first brought before us. And I'm remembering back to the day when we had a lot of people in here that were clamoring for what's known as live-work space. And there are, just to the north of this, there are a series of... And there are, just to the north of this, there are a series of what are known as industrial condos where, when you have an artist or someone selling furniture or some kind of a business, you're allowed to set up in there. And I remember one particular artist who wanted to live there as well, and because of the zoning on that particular piece of property, that wasn't allowed. And I think that the fact that these lots that front Grove Street are in a mixed-use zone and do have the alleyway access, this is exactly what the council back then wanted, was to have some place where someone, anywhere in Heelsburg, could build a live-work space. Right now, that does not exist. And so I just wanted to be, to just point that out, that this is the availability for Talking about things like the GMO allocations and the necessity of granny units on, on property, I'm not sure if that really comes into play when you're talking about a tentative map. Something like that could certainly come into play with a building code or a change to the zoning or other actions that we could take as a council on, on this and to do this kind of thing citywide. I think Housing Commissioner Abramson had a really good point that, you know, we have a limited number of lots, and in order to get a good amount of housing built, you know, requiring or giving incentive for building a granny unit, I think, is a good thing. But I also think that that should be something that, like, like he said, the city, the community housing committee should decide, and it also should be citywide. I think that this project here is a perfect example of something that, you know, you have one or two large lots, which the original lots aren't, lot lines aren't shown in this, is now being divided up into many pieces. We're now, on every single one of those lots, if we work together and come up with the requirements to put granny units and things like that on these larger lots, that could be, that could certainly be required. But today, what we're talking about is, we're just talking about whether this final map complies with the tentative map. And from, from every angle that I'm looking at it, it does. And I think that this kind of shows that we have a lot of other work that we need to do in order to get our design guidelines, granny unit, secondary dwelling guidelines, and all this stuff into place. And our community housing committee hasn't been able to meet for a while for a number of reasons, and that we need to keep focus on their charge and also our charge to be able to make the land in our city, which is not, there's not very much of it left for building residential, and there's nothing for building live-work for it to actually happen. So I certainly, I certainly support this final map because it totally complies with the tentative map that we approved in the past with all of the discussions that we had on the live-work space possibilities here, which I think is, I think opens up a huge possibility that we don't have anywhere else in town.
Councilmember Higley.
Whoa. This mic is loud. Yeah, I, I, I hear all the comments, and, you know, I appreciate them being brought up. And I, I think, you know, as, as a council, we agree with the majority of the comments that were made. I think, at the end of the day, it comes down to what, what we're tasked with right now is to approve this final map. And I went to some of the planning commission meetings, and this was pretty, it was vetted pretty well. And I, I, I really don't have an interest in kicking this back or delaying this because even though we may not have the allocations today, I think it's important that we do move forward to some of these things. And as the mayor pointed out, we do have some flexibility down the road, you know, once we get the recommendations back from the housing committee and some of these other things, where, you know, when those individual owners pull permits for the house that they want to build, that I have, I mean, I'm, I'm a big proponent of incentives. And so, you know, when the housing committee comes back with, you know, what, what they think is the best for things like ADUs, this is the perfect kind of project, where now they have something to look at and say, okay, some of these lots are kind of small, but maybe we could do an ADU this way, or it can be vetted at that level. But for today, you know, I'm happy to offer a resolution.
Is there any further discussion?
I do. Can I ask one more further clarification question? The, the map that we've got, that is, so I understand that legally, we're, the question in front of us is, does it conform? I get that. I understand that. Do the owners have the ability, given the events in the last week, to actually come back and, and come back to us with a different, if they so choose? Come back with, to us with a different map? To amend that?
No, they would have to file a new tentative map if they were to make substantial changes. They could, however, after this map is recorded, do lot line adjustments, but the lot line adjustments would have to be between individual lots and not impact the street right-ofways.
Right, so the streets, the backbone of the streets would have to be the same, but the individual lots could be adjusted?
Yeah, you could, you can't create any more lots than what you started with, but you could adjust lot lines if, if there was a value in that, but that's.
I understand, I understand. Okay. Understand. So, yeah, I think, I, I feel like this, what's in front of us is very limited. It's been, you know, the, the law says what the law says, and we've, it's, it's a, it's a parcel act, a parcel map. It's, it's in compliance with, with the tentative. There, we've got lots of other ways to, to influence what actually gets built on those parcels. And to Director Salma's point, you know, can, can the, the owners look at maybe one of, some of those lot lines and say, hmm, if we, if we move this over here, that means we can do another, we can actually have another ADU on this other, on the other lot. I think that, you know, it sounds like that's possible, and we can certainly, you know, look to them to, to consider that. But as far as what's in front of us right now, I think it's pretty clear.
I'm not even assuming that we could stop this. I've already talked to legal for the last day about it. Big meeting for me because I saw it in the consent agenda item. And I really do want my public to understand that when I ask to clarify information, I think that's a healthy sign in government. It's not a waste of time to talk about something that clearly was a year and a half and two years ago and more. And with a new council and with different things happening in the world, government needs to get out of the way of itself sometimes. And so, yeah, you may have something on the books, but I agree with one of our citizens that said, you get out of the way, maybe talk to the people that are our friends or potentially neighbors that could maybe help us in some of our problems and not get into a mindset of, that's the map, and we have to match it exactly the way this city said a year and a half ago or two years ago. So I caution us to not get so impatient about questions. If we don't keep asking questions in this community, we have such little property left. If we don't do that, and see, this is like the community housing committee hasn't met, this is bleeding out right now, what's going on. This is because we haven't been meeting, and I'm not faulting. I'm simply asking people to have patience instead of reprimanding or even thinking that we shouldn't be talking about something when I think it's a healthy conversation. And perhaps the owners are in the room, and they'll hear it, and they'll say, hey, they, it sounds like the city council wants some help on, like mayor said, live-work space. Never even thought of that, mayor. I'm glad you said it in the public eye. That's what we're supposed to be doing. Talking about things that matter to us in public rather than having to have deals or go with some old plan that doesn't address current needs. And maybe it's because I spent my morning at the county, and maybe it's because I know some people have lost their homes, and a lot of students have been affected in my district, Santa Rosa. I'm just telling you, it's all relative, and it's all connected. So I am thankful, and I can support this map in a consent agenda item because legally, that's all I can do tonight. But I really support healthy, robust conversation about land use, and I want it transparent, and I want my citizenry to understand the ramifications of decisions, even that prior councils thought was wisdom and now we know isn't wisdom because we have a crisis or a potential need for different kind of housing than large lots with big houses on them. So thank you for letting me ask questions because I can't do my work or be a human being if I can't. So I can support this decision to have the map stamped tonight, and it overlays another map that a year and a half or two years ago, they met all the qualifications. But I think within those spaces, there's plenty to talk about, and I'm really excited that we're talking about it.
So with that, I'd like to offer a resolution of the city council of the city of Heelsburg approving the Farmstead subdivision final map, accepting dedication subject to improvement of public streets, public utility easements, public water easements, and public sewer easements, and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Higley?
Yes.
Councilmember Monaiokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
I'm serious, I need to know.
You can say, yes. Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. Okay, the resolution passes. Moving on, we have no public hearings tonight. Move to item eight, eight A, the Tourism Sustainability Study. City Manager McKelley.
Thank you, Mayor McCaffrey. Councilmembers, wait for the PowerPoint to get up.
So item you have before us is really how we want to proceed with the Tourism Sustainability Study. Little background, council adopted in their goals for 1718, an economic development, balance commercial tourism growth with quality of life to more closely align with community values. Part of that process was to develop a tourism study, tourism slash sustainable, sustainability slash livability study, if you, if you'd like. So in August 8th of 2017, an RFP was sent out, taking a look at what a sustainable tourism study would look like. Because I need to use the clicker. You can just poke me and say, use the clicker. And so we did that, that went out in August of 2017. A little background on that, what, how we developed the scope for the RFP was, we, we had a number of calls with different firms throughout the country that had specialized in this type of work. What we found is there's not a lot of firms in the United States, excuse me, there's not a lot of studies in the United States looking at livability. There was a lot of studies that were being done in Europe, dealing with some of the same concerns that our residents have voiced here in Heelsburg. And so it was challenging to find, if you want to call it a canned study, if you will, that would really meet the, the needs of Heelsburg. So what we ended up doing was really customizing the, the proposal or the request for proposal, and that went out on August 8th. Some key, a couple of key components, I won't read all of these, but a couple of key components were really to determine local residents and business owners' understandings and perceptions of tourism and hospitality, and really the impacts to the community. Thank you. And the other one is to determine the community's sense of place, and that's really, a really more difficult process because it really is no hard at it to determine what livability means for the individual person in Heelsburg. My, my assumption is you ask one person what livability means, they'll give you one answer, you ask somebody else, and they'll give you a slightly different answer. So much more difficult to determine what that, what that looks like. And so through a robust outreach process, we would hopefully be able to determine that. So that was, those are some of the key components. So we sent the RFPs out. We received six. One of them really didn't meet the minimum qualifications, and, and you can see there, the, the, the five that really met the MQs, as we like to say, the, the range, the range between $75,000 and $183,000 to do the studies, which was significant. We, we anticipated the, the study to come in less than that based on the conversations we'd had with the previous consulting firms. So staff reviewed those, and, and there is a process we'd go through if, if council desires to move forward with, with this study. That being said, staff, after seeing this and going through the processes, is really recommending a different approach at this point. So due to a number of factors, which is mentioned in the PowerPoint, and, and part of that is the, the work that EFA, Mr. Eiler, Rob Eiler, did for the HTID through the city, which looked at some of the, the economic data related to tourism, livability. Some of that is already addressed. Because the cost is so significant, to, to work with this, one of these six, five consulting firms, and the work that EFA did, staff was, is asking council to take a, a different approach. An alternative to this would be looking at the city strategic planning process in, in early 2018. And so if I can kind of go back, go back a little bit, 2013, we embarked on a five-year strategic planning process, and it was a, about a six-month process. It included lots of public input, lots of community meetings, met with staff, met with focus groups throughout the community. We had a number of meetings up at the Villa Chantel Claire, evening meetings, and a lot of feedback and input was taken from that process. And, and the idea is, where do we as a community want to be going? Really, where is a city do we want to be going over the next five years? And so that strategic planning process really focused on the city's needs. And of course, the community's needs were part of that, but it was more of a, I would say, a business approach from a goal-setting perspective. I think what we're seeing recently, besides what happened on Monday, the, the priorities maybe are changing a little bit in this community. I think it's important to remember back in 2013, we were in a different place. We were coming out of a recession. We were taking a look at how we could improve business, taking a look at clearing, making sure development projects were able to move forward in a, in a, in a relative manner. And so I think that has changed over the last four or five years, and so this might be an opportunity for the community and council to take a different approach at what we want to look at for, for the next five years. And then, of course, the tragedy which befell the, our community, especially obviously Santa Rosa, on, on Sunday night and Monday, and into the week, frankly, it, it really puts a different perspective on things than what we were talking about even a week ago. So that's, notwithstanding what happened this past weekend, I think where, where staff is, is, we're recommending we take a different approach. And one of those is because, because of the cost, because of the work that, which has already been done by Mr. Eiler, and because of really the changing wants and needs of this community, I think revisiting the strategic plan in 2018, really a year before we would normally be revisiting it, makes a lot of sense from, from staff's perspective, and of course, it's ultimately council's determination. The other thing we have set up for October 25th is this work session we've been talking about. It really talks about livability. It came from a previous council meeting. I think with the events that happened recently, obviously, the 25th is going to be very challenging for staff to, to meet. We were actually ready to go Monday. We have all the collateral advertisements ready to go with the dates of the 25th. However, we really need more time in order to advertise that to the community to get it out. So what staff is recommending is either reschedule the meeting to November 1st, which is still a challenge, but we can definitely take, meet, meet that date, and the, the date is available at the villa, or look at postponing it to a later date. So that's, that's what we're looking to, that's what staff's looking to do, or at least staff's recommendation. So I think to kind of tie it all off, if you will, what staff is asking council to consider is really postpone the tourism study indefinitely at this point. Consider updating the five-year strategic planning process in 2018, and if that were the case, staff would come back with you with a much more detailed plan of what that would look like, public outreach, so forth, and, you know, what, what that would entail. And then take a look at rescheduling the work session, the livability work session from October 25th to November 1st, or to later, later date to be determined. But it's going to be really challenging to have a productive meeting on October 25th in order to get the word out to this community and the way it needs to be, to be done. We had meetings set up last week to meet with some community members. Obviously, those meetings didn't, didn't occur. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Go ahead.
I had an opportunity to spend a lot of time reading through all those RFPs, if that's what they're called, and I got a lot of really good ideas. And I mentioned this today to you, City Manager, but I want to make sure my council knows. They have so many good ideas, and every single one of them is about stakeholders and beginning with stakeholders. So I can support definitely a different date, but I really do think, no matter what, that we have to look at that. So I wondered if we could all make a, I don't know, my question is really, have you read the RFPs? Because the people that send those forth, I mean, they're $100,000 contracts with consultants, they have some good methodology that we can utilize. But I'm with you, City Manager, I think we have a system with that strategic plan that was done back in 2014. Mayor McCaffrey was there, but none of us were. But we can look at that document and say that these are different attributes of quality of life. But we can look at that document and say that these are different attributes of quality of life and different aspects around government. I mean, I like the, the headings, and I think that we should stay with that. But I guess my question is like, what can we learn from these people that have put together these really thick packets? And I wondered if any of my council members had had a chance to look at what they presented, that they would do for us, only because the next step is going to be, we're going to be doing it. And I just wondered if any of you read it. And I can't ask you on an email, and I can't ask you on the street, if I've already asked one person. So, that's why I'm asking. It's transparent government. So have any of you had a chance to look at those? I know we saw the dollar signs, but did you look at the process that they went through to create a livability study?
Of course.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Did you have any questions for staff?
Well, did they look at it too? I mean, I know city manager did, but...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I think, I think the same, the same things that you're looking at, Vice Mayor Mansell, is what we look at. We always, whenever we get a proposal in through an RFP process, we always try and educate ourselves on things we may have missed. And a lot of these consulting firms do, do this. They all do it on a regular basis. So, we can actually learn a lot from their proposals. But yeah, absolutely, we look through. That's how we, we determine that one of them didn't meet the MQs, frankly, so.
So will this council be able to, oh, this is a staff question now. Mayor, is, would the council be able to deepen the questions? For example, if you go back a couple of slides, where there were the questions, that were the framing questions? Because I saw some amazing work done by these companies, or these groups that want to come and help us, that they had really good questions. It was the one that had these questions at the bottom of the screen, and I know we're going to deepen that. It's community work session. I'm really mainly worried about the community work session getting postponed, and we're not dealing with good, rich questions. So, to me, I just wonder, can we look at those questions and deepen those a bit? So that we really do have a little bit more in line with our strategic plan and what the attributes of that were originally, because it was pretty decent. So, better than decent, it was amazing. So I'd love to see those deepen, but, and I just wonder what the potential was to learn from those proposals that you had to read through, because I read through them too.
At this point, I'd like to open up to the public. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item? Whether or not we should postpone these meetings, I know that there's some people out there that have some opinions on this. I'd love to hear your opinion. Come on, Marilyn. Thank you.
Okay. So I guess I'm, I'm feeling like I'm a broken record when I get up here and talk about sustainability. If you guys could show me that you understand, then I wouldn't have to do it, and I'd, I'd spare you. But my big concern, it often sounds like those of us who feel like our economy needs to be diversified don't like tourism, or don't like tourists, and I don't think that that's fair. I think that what we're looking at is when you put all your economic eggs in one basket, it's not sustainable. So, this last week, how many businesses closed down? Why? Because their employees didn't live here. Why don't they live here? It's a nice place to live. Well, they couldn't afford to live here, so they lived someplace else. So we aren't sustainable. In terms of the city holding a workshop, or a strategic planning, or a sustainable tourism discussion, if it isn't a managed discussion, if it's open, and it allows people to work together and come up with ideas and express themselves, then it doesn't take a lot of work to put it together. You just open up the place, and you have some ground rules, and you have a good, rich discussion, because I think there's such a wealth of ideas in this community, and, and we need to listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? There you go, welcome.
I, I think that you should continue to have these conversations, and I think that it is relevant to do so at this time. I don't think it needs to necessarily be postponed. I think that because many of the people involved in these conversations live locally in Healdsburg, a lot of the stakeholders within Healdsburg were not personally impacted in their residences or their businesses are still standing. I think it would be a very different situation if Healdsburg was, fell victim to the fires like other towns locally. And I think that people still very much care about this issue and don't want to wait and kick the can down the road. I think that there's still issues. And I also think our tourism, the question around tourism, and when you think about national and international tourism, people aren't going to come here because they think all of Sonoma County burned. And people are already talking about how the twenty-seventeen wine vintage is ruined, which is a complete lie. Most of it's already in the tank. But I think that the conversation needs to be had, and I think we need to talk about, if we see a huge decline in tourist visitation because of the fires and the perception that our area is, you know, tainted in some way, that's a relevant conversation to have too. And I think that this is a good time as any to have that conversation. So, thanks.
Thank you. Richard, welcome.
Good evening, Richard Burke. I'd just like to point out that if you're going to do strategic planning in January, one of the first tasks is to get information from all the stakeholders to influence you. So however this conversation is designed, and the data collected, would be wonderful input, both to your strategic planning process, and to the consultants you may or may not hire to do what is variously called sustainable tourism, or I think the corollary is a livability study, which was also used in the language. So, why not bring people together? It's been so rare, I think, that more than a hundred people have shown up for a workshop. And if you have two, maybe a hundred and fifty different people will show up, which would be a fifty percent improvement in input from the community. So, seems like you should just go ahead with that, and all the other things you're doing around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, welcome.
Hello, Brian Summer. So, you know, if there's a positive to come out of the negative, last week, it is the unity. And I know a lot of you concerned about Healdsburg and our role in Sonoma County. But let me just tell you about Healdsburg's role last week. I've never seen the type of things that I've seen in a whole community. And that's probably one of the biggest advantages of living in a small town. And when you look at Dustin Valet, he did seventeen hundred and fifty meals in seven days for firefighters, and delivered them personally. And you know, my hotel guests stayed five nights last week, when people that live in Healdsburg evacuated. I still had tourists in my hotel. And there was nowhere to eat in town, except for Valet. And on Wednesday night, when it got a little bit scary for me and everybody else, Dustin brought food to the hotel, just to make sure that they had something to eat. And fortunately, I think they, HPG was open kind of till five. But if anybody wanted to take the wind out of the sails of tourism, it's done. So, I think that me, myself, you know, I, I probably canceled two hundred reservations for over six figures, well over six figures. So, I now have to worry about, okay, winter has come early. I'm a Stark from Game of Thrones, right? Winter is here. My employees are now going to have December, January, for October, November, December, January, February. So there's a lot of thought that needs to go into how we proceed here. And I can't say enough about how much we've come together and how much ground we made. One of my big losses was that I lost my small group. We have a group that talks, people from both sides of the fence, and we talk. So I don't think that this should be canceled. I understand if it has to be postponed. But again, I also like council members saying that we should strike while the iron is hot, because this is real right now. And at the same time, I know the vice mayor had some questions, but the city staff reached out to a group of people on both sides of the fence, so to speak, to figure out these questions that we should ask and take to the public. So you're at a point where you got everybody working together, and everybody's playing nice. And I think we should continue that, and move forward, in the same spirit of resolve that Healdsburg should move forward in to honor the loss of our county.
Thank you. Anybody else with a question or comment on this item? Taya, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Taya Levine. I think the original, the first speaker of the evening opened up by acknowledging that the world changed this week. I think that the, that's what fire does. It completely transforms everything in an instant. And so that firestorm that came through Santa Rosa didn't just cut aside through the countryside. It cut aside through the economy in ways that we can't even begin to grasp or appreciate. I too want us to have the most sensible, livable way of going forward as a community. The relatedness of our town economy to the larger county is critical. This county right now, when it comes to hospitality and tourism, Healdsburg is now one of maybe two or three of the only places people can come to in the wine country. Our task, I think, is not to turn inward and talk to ourselves and each other about what we want only. Not that that's insignificant. We need to have a lot of dialogue. But the significance now of being connected to and a part of the larger environment that we inhabit, we're all devoted to that. We care about the people who've lost their homes. We care about, we want to help. We want to support. The economic engine on which we're dependent right now is crippled. And our ability to return and retain vitality, not only for us, but in the whole county, is going to take thinking and consideration of variables that go far beyond what we're experiencing right here, that we've had some difficulty with, and as it's progressed over time in our own town. So I want to encourage you to consider the right timing of when we bring people together, and that we do that with a consideration of the larger context in mind, and the implications of anything that we discuss for the future, because it affects not only us. And we aren't in a place, I think, in mind or heart, to come into a conversation of that kind with equanimity and groundedness. And I don't know when that moment will be, but I'm not optimistic about the dates that are on the screen. I want to also support and reinforce the notion that these kinds of community engagement processes that are designed to get public participation in policymaking, require skillful support. And I want you to not abandon the notion that having strong structural design for any gathering of a lot of group of people, and strong support from facilitation that is skillful, to create the right container, the conditions, and the support for meaningful dialogue to happen. It won't happen on its own. So I would urge you to consider seriously the wisdom of investing in a study that was based on conditions and concerns that were very real, that have completely changed as of Monday. And to, to consider consultant proposals that were based on that, that aren't, they can't possibly take into consideration the current now, would not necessarily, I think, be the best use of resources at this time. And there is a way for you to approach and engage in strategic planning next year that combines what the city manager was referring to, in terms of a business dialogue, with substantive and meaningful stakeholder participation that contributes to that deliberation. Any meaningful strategic planning is going to take a look at the environment, and the environment now is far more than just us. For our own well-being, and for the sake of the future of this entire region, I think we have an obligation to consider that, and I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosie, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Rosie Fabian, Sherman Street. In light of the recent events, I would suggest that we take a wait-and-see approach. I have survived the Loma Prieta when I lived in San Francisco, and also Hurricane Isabel in Virginia Beach. And I will tell you that it did negatively affect both of those tourist towns severely. Yes, we are one of just a handful. When people do the research, they are going to find out that we are open for business. And folks that have already planned trips, I'm sure, will continue to come here. But I feel like it would be in poor taste, considering the losses that have happened to our cities, our cities around us, to the people in the community that have lost members of their family, their property. To go ahead with a tourism sustainability study, I don't want to see that money spent on this right now. I might rather see that spent on other things in the community right now, if at all. I believe this is necessary, but maybe not at this time. We should wait at least three to six months before we make any decisions on this study. I think a lot of it will play out before we even have to do anything along these lines. And I really feel it's in our best interest to just wait and see on this, because a lot's going to play out in the next few months that, you know, we can't really predict. The cleanup alone is going to be overwhelming. And when visitors are flying into a place like, like, you know, Santa Rosa or San Francisco, they're going to be seeing a lot of things along the side of the road that are going to be disturbing. And it's just, we're going to be in the news for a while. That's just how it's going to be. And we're just going to have to get used to the new normal, which is an altered Sonoma County. So I think it would be best to just wait on this if we can. There's no hurry. And I know you're going to make the right decision. So thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
I would just make it simple. If the city manager says that this is taxing, at this taxing time, I would agree with the city manager.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll bring it back to close.
So I want to be clear what I said. October twenty-fifth would be difficult to meet. November, if we do want to postpone it, November first would be the next logical time to do that, or later on, after the first. But that's, what, what I'm getting at is that the twenty-fifth would be a difficult ti, a difficult date for us to meet. What I'm proposing is we either do it November first, or we take a look at doing it later out.
So I, I've given a lot of thought to this. You know, as far as the, the tourism study proper, that we put out an RFP for, even before Monday's events, and this last week's events, I, I was ready to not go forward with that, just because of the cost, because of two reasons. I think, first of all, I think that some members of our community did a yeoman's job on polling and bringing the community together on May thirty-first of last year. And they have an excellent documentation of that, both written and video. And I think that that makes up a, half the study of kind of a snapshot in time about what, how people feel about that. And then at the second, and the second part of it was, you know, an economic analysis. And I think that the, the group, the HTID group commissioned Rob Eiler to do that study, which was part of the item that happened two meetings ago, which I thought was an excellent outline of the economic analysis of that. But then, you know, you pile on top of that what happened last, this last week. And I think some of the speakers were accurate about it. And there's even data that's coming in already, about that our economic engine is not firing on all cylinders anymore. And so, so there's that. And then, I think that this, this meeting on the twenty-fifth, I think it's pretty clear that it can't happen on the twenty-fifth, but I really want it to happen. I really want to, I really want to have that conversation. And I think that the events of, of last week will play into that, and rightly so. And so November first is great, and, you know, I'm, I'm ready for that. And also- And also, the strategic plan, I mean, I think that that's the thing that, you know, a few months down the road, once all the dust is kind of settled, I think that's when we, we really get into the, you know, the kind of meatiness of what this is all about. You know, and we have another thing that is also kind of looming on us, which is the renewal of the Healdsburg Tourism Improvement District, right? Which, you know, you can look, look at that a couple of different ways, right? I mean, I think, you know, if I remember correctly, the direction that we gave to staff was to make the work session, the community work session on livability to happen before that, that, the process for the, a public hearing for that. And is November 1st still before that date? I know there's two dates that are...
Yes, November 6th, I think, the next council meeting would be when the HTID item would come before you.
So I think that, you know, I've been, just been hearing a lot of clamoring from the, from the community about something kind of like what, what Marilyn said, that was a little bit more fluid, where you could, you know, we sit down at a table and we're not up here like this, and, you know, I know Vice Mayor was, was largely in support of that as well, about something where we can have more of a kind of one-on-one or one-on-many dialogue about this. And I think that the events of last week will also play into it. So, I mean, that's kind of where I am on this, and I just, you know, I'm, I'm not totally set in stone, but I'd love to hear what, what other folks have to say. Councilmember Gold.
Yes, I would support the November 1 date, because if, if we could pull it off, I think it would be advisable to have that meeting in advance of our discussions about the HTID. With regard to the sustainability study, I also, when I, when I read the Eiler report that was submitted as part of the HTID discussion, was struck at just the, the depth of information, economic information, and, and, you know, tourism-related information that, that had already been assembled, and kind of wondered if we needed a complete study in addition to that. So I think what I would like to see happen, I like the city manager's idea of having a more complete, you know, discussion of our, you know, strategic discussion. And I'd kind of like to see a nexus of what information we have, and what information we still need to get in order to make informed decisions on this topic. I think, as the mayor alluded to, we did get a lot of good information from the citizens' group that put together a, a discussion about tourism and sustainability, and I think we're going to get a lot more input at our meeting. But in addition to that, I would really like us to execute a well-designed and professionally-administered, statistically defensible survey, so that we could get some opinions from people who, you know, segments of the population that don't come to these public meetings. I think that would be a useful piece of information to, to add.
Councilmember Newogus.
Yeah. A quick clarifying question first. A point was brought up about the Healdsburg Avenue study. Is that, what is the, I know we approved it. At what point are we, where are we with that, as far as the potential of clawing that back?
We're in the process of initiating the contract, gathering the insurance. It is not signed yet, but it is in the process.
So it's not signed, so therefore we could potentially legally stop the process if we wanted to?
It would need to be agendized as a new item. There's really no way that you could do something like a motion for reconsideration, because the time for that has passed. You can really only do that in the same meeting. So you'd have to just re-agendize it.
And if we re-agendize it, it'd be another two weeks, and do we have enough time to, I mean...
Three, yeah, Heather just pointed out three weeks, actually, because we skipped a week.
Point of information, does this city council only meet every two weeks? Because isn't there certain situations where you might have to have more than two, more than two meetings a year, or, excuse me, a month? I mean, if you have an issue, can't you meet more? I just want to know about that.
Absolutely. Your meeting schedule is set by your Muni code. You can absolutely have special meetings anytime the council is interested and agrees on the need for a special meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry, I think on the left wing here of the council, we're wondering what you're talking about re-agendizing?
Sorry, so, yeah, so now that I've gotten some clarification, so I'll, let me, let me go forward. So I guess, you know, I'm, we, we did approve the, the Healdsburg Avenue study last, last meeting, with, which is the, you know, the $450,000 study for Powell Avenue to City Limits on Healdsburg Avenue, right? I think...
I don't think that this is something that we can really discuss...
Right.
...in this, but I hear what you're saying.
No, I understand. So, so...
Can you, can you hold off for one sidebar?
Yeah, yeah. But you want to talk about the study and the...
I'll, I'll go on with the rest of my points, sure. Right, so I think it's, what's, what's clear to me from the Eiler study was, was that this, this question isn't, isn't, it's not so much, you know, tourism is part of it, but really it is a bigger question of, of strategy, of, you know, what, you know, what is, what are the economic components of our, of our, of our town? What are the cultural components? How does, how do all these, these pieces put, you know, stitched together, right? I think that, so when I look at, at this, you know, this tourism study, I think, you know, boy, and combined with the fact that we do have such a rich, you know, skillset, and some really intelligent, dedicated people in our community who are willing to step up and participate in these conversations, I'm, I'm feeling the same way, that, you know what, I think we, the, we, we do have this, this urgency of the, of the HTID. I think we have enough information about the, about the economic impact, and I think I want, and I do want to have the 11, that 11, I want, I do want to have the conversation about the tourism before the HTID, which by definition means 11-1. But I think that that's, to me, is good enough for our immediate needs, which is to, to consider the, the HTID, okay? I don't want to proceed with the, with the study, because I think we do, we do need to have a bigger strategic question. I would like to hear about the, you know, the options for the Healdsburg Avenue, but I'm, I can hold off on that. The, I think really what it comes down to is, especially given, given the events of last week, I think we owe each the community to step back and, and have that, have a bigger conversation, have a more, a more substantive conversation that's not just about the tourism and save that, save that money from, from this tour. We might, we might come back and say, okay, you know, these are some solid proposals, and maybe we'll, we'll revisit them later, after we have, after we have some time to really chew on it. But I'm not, I'm not comfortable moving forward with these, with these studies.
Okay, all right.
So I did read every single one of the studies, as I mentioned earlier, and I don't have any interest in working with any of the studies. I don't have, I, I did enjoy looking at them in terms of understanding their systems, and every single one of them, as Richard mentioned, Richard Berg, had to do a stakeholder polling, and looking at the strategic plan that we're going to be looking at for next year, this pathway to sustainability that Josie Gay and many others, I know Mayor, you were the mayor during this time, 2014, right? I have no problem staying with that structure, but my, I can go to November 1st, and I absolutely support that we have such wisdom in this room, and I just want to thank Brian for bringing up unity, because I'm feeling it too, Brian. I don't think it's, but I don't think it's offense for me, it's more like just people working together. I don't even see this as an us, us and them, or, and that's why I've been choosing my language carefully, and I'm not saying a tourism study, I'm saying a livability study, because I feel like we do have some numbers that, thanks to the HTID group, they put forth that Robert Eiler study. I get it, we have some concrete numbers. What I'm deeply concerned about is some of the wisdom that I heard, and I almost started crying about it, is talking about skillful support and being willing to look at designing that isn't just about now and not going inward. And I think that that's a problem I have with government, as well as when there's crisis. I just have been interfacing with other people that have been dealing with a lot of crisis, and I feel that we need to probably look at skill for support, and I know Marilyn mentioned it too, we need facilitation that is good, and I want to go November 1st, so I could support November 1st with good facilitation. I don't want it overly managed, but I also don't want people to feel shut down if they do want to come in, but we just have to have time limits. But I just feel like the, the structure could be really good. I want to also commend our new communications director, community engagement director. That's my favorite part of your role, community engagement. It was my hope when we formed this, idea of having this new position, and you're doing an amazing job, that you can be really helpful in this, and you have been, I know you've been really busy, and I really commend you, I didn't mention your name earlier. But I think that's what I want to see before we vote on the HTID, because I think we all realize tourism is a huge, important thing. I heard a lot of business people today talking about it in relation to housing, and how the vacation rentals are at a threat now, because they're going to be rented out, and what are you going to do with the tourists? And we even saw Cersei from the Hotel Healdsburg, who said her numbers are down, she's housing firemen in the Healdsburg Hotel. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's sacrifice time now, but no matter what, if we do this on November 1st, I just hope that we are patient with each other and get into that thinking of the skillful support, and looking at ourselves beyond just the boundaries of the city, and we see ourselves fitting with a bigger picture, because Sonoma County is going to need us to be part of some of the solutions, and that's why I think housing is such a big issue, and that's where livability is it. You can get close to people, you can get wonderful food, which we're good at in this community, but we need to do housing. So my concern has always been that we have to work on the housing. So I saw this as a livability study, not a study about, we don't want tourists. That's never been my paradigm. I know it comes off that way for people, but it's not. And so I really want people to be assured that the November 1st date, if we vote on that, I'm going to keep pushing for the housing piece and looking at how we can be more inventive and creative, because that sustainability is not there if you don't have housing for your workers. And our community has already got that struggle, so it's going to be exacerbated with what's happening south of us. So I could support Mayor, November 1st. I concur with you about keeping it so that we really do honor the previous event, May 31st, that some of us went to, and we felt it was a good start at community stakeholder talk, and the video, the infamous video that we got to watch or not watch in public. I think a workshop atmosphere is exactly what this community needs, and it needs to be really low-key and not pressured and managed, and with a facilitator that stands up front and only lets people talk if they want them to. It really needs to be, in my opinion, just community input, and not a bunch of, I know what this is going to look like at the end, but trust that we can do this as a community, come together and ask questions. I don't know about those questions, sorry, but if you look at the questions in some of the RFPs, I think they're more interesting and a little more developed than those, because those are just, to me, they're just as vague as anything else. What do you like, what do you don't like? I want to hear about specific things that are livable in our community. Work, or, excuse me, workability, but also food sourcing, and how people rent, and where people spend their money. The RFPs talked about that. They actually surveyed residents that live here, the locals, where are they spending their money in town? And the locals that do sustain an economy. And then lastly, Mayor, sorry, I just have to say, there was one, one part of an RFP that was fascinating to me, where the people that had researched our town to put forth their proposal suggested that, you know, we need to slow down in this community, which I thought was interesting. And, and I don't know if you read those cover letters, but they did their research on our town, and then they came in and basically said, what can we do for you? And I thought it was interesting that they all said stakeholder participation, with, Richard Berg said, get that going now, rather than waiting until January. And so I don't think we should wait at all, I think we should get together but have skillful facilitation, and make sure that we have questions that really are matching our strategic plan, which has really great mile markers, quality of life, economic diversity, effective, efficient government, fiscal responsibility, infrastructure, facilities. Those are so cool, to just work with those as livability. I mean, there's so much we could do that we've already done, that we could add to. I trust our community is going to show up, we have beautiful people in this community, but we have to still meet, so November 1st would be really great, I could support that.
Thank you, Councilmember Higley.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with November 1st, I think it's important to do this meeting. But before I say too much, I do want to thank all the companies that did submit the RFPs. When you look at the detail, and each of them kind of had their different approach, and there was also common threads amongst all of them in terms of, you know, how they do their studies and reports and surveys. So I think there's a lot of information there that we, you know, got from this RFP process, and I was looking through the number of people involved, and thinking, you know, we need to be careful when we request RFPs, that we are ready to move forward with one, because pretty soon, you know, if, if we're just requesting these nonstop, then we're not going to get quality people, the, the good, the good ones are going to say, you know, forget Healdsburg, it's a waste of time. So I think we need to be very careful when we do request these RFPs, when you look at the amount of time and energy that these people put in to submit these reports for Healdsburg. Couple of comments, after reading them, I mean, I, I could see where, you know, if we were going to move forward, and I'll, I'll just say right now that I don't support moving forward with the tourism study, primarily because the, the data points have changed. The, you know, we, we don't know what's going on with the economics in Sonoma County, and what the greater impact is going to be on Healdsburg. But, you know, aside from that, as the mayor said, even before we got to, you know, Monday, when all the fires hit, and everything changed in Sonoma County, I had concerns about the price as well. Because I thought the Eiler study that we got from the HTID was, as Councilmember Gold said, was very detailed, gave us a lot of the economic data information. And I think the next piece is the community information. And so I am looking forward to having that community meeting, and I think the discussion was to have kind of small groups, and yet needs to have a real good facilitator. I support having that being a part of the strategic planning process. You know, one of the concerns I had with some of the RFPs was, the focus seemed to be, you know, they're used to, how do you grow tourism? And I think what we're looking for is, it's all about balance. And so there were a couple of that I would have just tossed out, because, okay, you're, you're not quite getting it, and I've, I've gotten this before, where you have to understand Healdsburg, it's not Charleston or some other, you know, we're, we're, I mean, we are pretty unique. So just from that standpoint, I think I would have gone through the, the RFPs to kind of whittle them down a little bit. One thing, I'm fine with, you know, if we need to workshops, I think, you know, as Brian mentioned, you know, right now people are talking, the community's together, and I think this is the good time to sit down and talk and really focus on what it is we're looking for. And then what I would do is, you know, when we have these breakout sessions, I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be smaller tables, and we're going to go through these things. And I think one of the questions you ask each of the tables is, you know, maybe a suggestion for a potential survey question. And any community survey, I would, I would want, you know, the questions, obviously, they need to be anonymous, but I think it would be good to add to there, what is a question that you want to ask the community? And so that's, you know, maybe then the staff can gather those and fine-tune, you know, with, with their consultant, as to what the best way to phrase that would be, but that would be one of my suggestions. I think that's really about it for my comments, I'm fine with November 1st. I, you know, and again, it's really up to the bandwidth, you know, if November 1st works, I've looked at my calendar, it works for me, so...
So listening to, to everybody, city manager, I think, I'll kind of sum it up, I think the November 1st date, I think everybody's kind of agreeing that we should proceed with the community work session on that date, not going through with the survey as we sent out the RFPs for, and then also continuing with the strategic planning process in 2018.
I'll come back with a much more detailed item, what that strategic planning process would look like, and I'll obviously take council's direction on that.
Yep, thank you. So is direction good? Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to item 8B, Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Use Policies.
I believe it's going to be...
Mr. Lucio, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members.
All good.
Hamili Seah, Community Services. Tonight's agenda item for discussion is a Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Use Policies. And staff's recommended action for tonight's agenda item is adopt the resolution approving the Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Use Policies. the Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Use Policies. Some of you might know, the Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Management Plan was accepted by City Council back in March of 2017, and a critical component of the management plan was for City to meet with Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve stakeholders and develop a set of use policies for the preserve. The use policies on the preserve would govern day-to-day activities, and these use policies were meant to be more descriptive in nature, more user-friendly for the public or the park users, and I believe that's what we've developed today that you have before you. Therefore, the City formed a stakeholder group consisting of City staff, Fitch Mountain Association, Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, and our very own Parks and Recreation Commissioners. Staff had two stakeholder meetings. The first meeting was in July. The meeting in July focused on gathering information from the conservation easement for the property and the management plan that was produced by our consultant, Pranuski, and also looking at public uses on the property and allowable activities, and compile the information and develop a set of use policies for the stakeholder group to review. The second meeting focused on incorporating rules of the trail that were developed by the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. They were developed by Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition and provided to the City, and also fine-tuning some of the language for the use policies that you have before you tonight, and then completing proposed use policies to be reviewed tonight. Here I have an example of a use policy. I didn't entirely put the entire use policy in there, because it's very lengthy, but just to give you an idea what a use policy would look like in the use policies, I chose hiking, not sure why, I just chose hiking. Use only open trails, respect trail closures, and do not trespass on private property. Again, these use policies were meant to be more user-friendly for the public, for the park users, kind of to provide them a little bit more of understanding what's in the conservation easement and the management plan, and so that's what we developed these use policies. Of course, it was with assistance of the community. The Park and Recreation Commission considered the use policies at their meeting in September and by motion recommended approval to City Council, and that's why we're here tonight. I'd like to thank some of the organizations that are critical in helping develop these use policies. Again, Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, Fitch Mountain Association, and our very own Parks and Recreation Commissioners. Of course, I also have the Sonoma County Trails Council. They were also very instrumental in helping develop rules of the trail for biking. And finally, I'll provide staff's recommended action is adopt the resolution approving the Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Use Policies. And that concludes my presentation. Does the council have any questions?
Any questions for staff from the council? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Is there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for discussion and action. My comments on this is that I know that the Parks and Recreation Commission and staff have worked really hard on this. If you remember back several years, this has been run through the wringer backwards and forwards, and I think when we have all the stakeholders agreeing on this, and I think this is great to get this finalized.
I'll offer, oops, I lost it. He better go. A resolution of the City Council of Hillsburg adopting a resolution approving the Fitch Mountain Park and Open Space Preserve Use Policies for the Fitch Mountain Management Plan and delegating authority to the City Manager to execute the use policies on the City's behalf.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hickley?
Yes.
Councilmember Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. Resolution passes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Himey. Okay, moving on to new business, item 9A, we have an update on emergency services operations. Chief Boaz.
If I could begin, Mayor McCaffrey and council. So with the intent of tonight is to give council and the community an update of really what's happened, what's transpired since, really, Monday, early morning. And so the intent is to have the fire chief, the police chief, the community services director or outreach coordinator talk about what we've done, be able to answer any questions to council, and then obviously answer any questions the community may have and go from there. No action is being asked to be taken at this point, just simply an overview of all the different activities. Chief Boaz.
Thank you, chief.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and public. First of all, thank you for all the kind words, and thank you for your support during this very difficult week. I was very proud to be part of the City Hillsburg and part of this team this week. I think everybody did an outstanding job. What I'm going to do tonight for you is just kind of drill down and talk specifically about what we did here in the City of Hillsburg with our resources. I'm not going to brief you on all the fires and everything that's going on. I just want to tell you how your city employees handled it, how we responded. I believe Chief Burke is going to be joining me in a second here, and he'll do the same thing with respect to the Police Department. So here's what we did in the Hillsburg Fire Department on Sunday night, early Monday morning. We had two engines out already on incidents, so they were already staffed, and now one of them was a paid staff, one of them was a second call in district, so it was already staffed with reserves. Both of those engines pulled off of the, or cleared the incidents they were on and responded on initial attack to the Tubbs Fire as it came into Santa Rosa. And I just, I responded down and assisted with, I went down to the command post and assisted with some operations, some different operations down in the City of Santa Rosa. Our engine companies, two of them, 6381, which is our larger type 1 engine, and 6361, which is the wildland engine, they both, well, they were sent to the Mark West area first, and then subsequently up to Fountain Grove soon thereafter, and they were mostly assisting with evacuations and structure defense. And they were, I mean, obviously, you saw, you've seen pictures of, they were involved in some pretty intense operations there with getting people out immediately in front of the fire and saving structures. And, you know, obviously, there were a lot of structures that weren't saved, but I know that our crews, we've seen them on maps, they were able to save some people's homes, and that makes me happy, and, you know, nobody got injured, our equipment's okay. So one engine returned Monday morning, soon after daybreak, as did I, and the other one, I let stay there another day. They were assigned to a task force that was working in Santa Rosa area, and they were just basically under the direction, as long as you're down there and you're helping and you're doing good, you got a part of a plan and things are going well, you can stay. But if things start impacting Hillsburg, you're pulling off and coming back to our city. And that's, that was the intent of, you know, the leaders intend of what they were working under. So they stayed until Tuesday morning, and then I called everybody back. And during that time, too, we also had, I mean, we were, we did an all-call back. We called back all of our reserves and a lot of our paid staff. And during Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we had three engines staffed at our station almost at all times in anticipation of anything else happening. So our reserve firefighters really, really stepped up to the plate. They all came down, they all helped every day, every night, all night. I guess it was Monday night, we staffed our phones for 24 hours, answered hundreds and hundreds of phone calls, and our reserves helped with that. They also, as I said, staffed other engines and handled all the other emergency calls in the city and calls, other calls for service. Our fire marshal, fire marshal and division chief, Linda Colster, she, of course, responded also. She responded to the station when I responded down to Santa Rosa, and she was primarily responsible for, you know, managing the operations here in Hillsburg, should anything be coming our way immediately, and managing, staffing up engines and calling people back and managing the information, going over the phones to the public. She did a fantastic job and was a big help. Of course, we were in contact throughout the night. So after that Tuesday, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, when the smoke was really laying down, I mean, there was, I mean, what we had was, we basically had two large fires that were threatening Hillsburg from either direction. I mean, they were still a little ways off, but from what I saw from the fire threat and what happened in Santa Rosa and other areas, and the lack of resources in the area still, one of the things we did, and, you know, I sent our guys out, our folks out on tactical patrols, myself included. We drove the areas around Hillsburg, surrounding Hillsburg. We met with the public, we answered questions, we looked for new fires, we just looked for anything we could do to be just on full alert for anything happening here in Hillsburg. So during that time, too, I also went out and met out at the airport, CAL Fires using our airport as a HILA base, which, a base of operations for 12 helicopters right now. I don't know if you've been out there, but it's impressive. I was also requested to help staff that with an ARF, an aircraft crash rescue firefighting engine. So one of our engines that has foam capabilities for, you know, flammable liquid spills, things like that, is out there, the staff were three, and it's been there every day since Wednesday morning on 12-hour shifts, helping out at the airport, and we're going to continue to do that as long as they need us. And I just wanted to reiterate right now, no Hillsburg Fire Department resources are committed to any of the incidents in Sonoma or Napa or Lake County. We're all here in quarters and ready to respond to any other emergency we may have. So you have to take any questions you have.
Thank you very much, chief.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'll move on, we'll move through the rest of the slides, and then we'll take questions. How about that?
Okay.
During this time, too, we also made the call early on to activate our Emergency Operations Center, and Deborah Nelson, who's our emergency coordinator and also our EOC manager, is here tonight as well. The call was made initially to just kind of ramp it up, get it going, but not a full activation and not staffing all positions. We still ramped it up a little more than that, and we did staff these positions, fire, law, operations, planning, finance, logistics, care and shelter. Our Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, is on the second floor of the Police Department, and that was also primarily because shelter operations that we were opening up a shelter, but also the evacuations that were imminent. So we closed shelter operations on October 16th at 10:00 a.m., and we pulled it up and closed the EOC also on the 16th at 12:00 p.m. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Burke now and talk a little bit about Police Department operations.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. And just to repeat what Jason said, I think this was a real proud moment for the City of Hillsburg. I know I was really proud to work with such a great team. You know, before the sun came up that morning, everybody was at work, from the City Manager on down to Mark Themig, who, again, really just impressive work by everybody, and everybody with a sense of urgency and purpose that was appropriate for the situation, and we hit the ground running and went to work. So fairly early in the incident, Santa Rosa Police Department, Sheriff's Department ended up taking a pretty instrumental role in evacuation of people who were directly in the path of this fast-moving, really deadly fire. And they put out a request for mutual aid, so we initially sent one police officer. We attempted, as additional police resources arrived and were called in off duty, we attempted to send two more, and they couldn't get down there. The situation they described was smoke so thick, they just couldn't see and drive any further safely, and flames shooting on both sides of the 101 and across the 101, so they had to return to the City of Hillsburg. But one of our police officers worked with the Santa Rosa Police Department doing evacuations, and he was down there, we didn't see him until late the next day, and he described a pretty chaotic night and got involved in some pretty intense work, kicking in doors, evacuating people, carrying one person down who couldn't walk three stories from a building. So he was down there for a while and had a pretty intense experience. In any event, within a matter of hours, we mobilized the Police Department. What that means is we essentially canceled vacations, canceled days off in the short term, and really ordered everybody to work in 12-hour shifts until further notice, which in this case resulted, since we're fully staffed, in about six to 10 sworn officers on duty at any given time, which was, which was great. And what's really interesting to note is our officers and our dispatchers, some of who lived in these areas that were evacuated, they really quickly dealt with their own personal situations and in some cases evacuated with their pets, families, spouses, kids, and got them situated and still managed to report to work very, very quickly. So the mobilization was very successful in that sense. We got a lot of people on duty very quickly, including two to three dispatchers in our center, our Emergency Operations Coordinator, Deborah Nelson. So that mobilization resulted in a lot of police officers being in the field. We got our evacuation plan ready to go, and then we had to do two types of evacuations, one being where we had a lot of notice and could do an orderly evacuation throughout the city, and the other being if we had to do it on the fly, like they ended up having to do in Santa Rosa and in some areas of the county. So we had plans in place for both of those eventualities. We had plenty of people to do that with, would have liked to have had more, but we had everybody that we could. And I'm really proud of the Police Department, Fire Department, and every city department who stepped up, stepped up for this. So as the incident winds down, we kind of go into a different mode. We provided security, obviously, during the evacuations, that was really important. In the areas that were advisory evacuations, we had a constant police presence there to ensure our houses were protected while people were gone. As those evacuations were lifted, we kind of went into a different mode of sort of the post-event, getting our people rested, but also working with the District Attorney's Office on issues of price gouging, which, and we've seen some news coverage of that, and I'm happy to say we've only had one reported incident in the City of Hillsburg, and the District Attorney's Office has been really aggressive and committed to dealing with those issues as they come up. I spoke personally with District Attorney Ravitch today, and her office has dedicated all of their available resources to this issue. In fact, I mentioned the one report that we had, and she was already personally aware of that situation, and District Attorney's investigators had already responded to the City of Hillsburg and investigated that incident by the time I spoke with District Attorney Ravitch today. So that was really encouraging and confirmed what I already knew, which was that they were going to be extremely proactive about it, and that involved a case of water, about any gouging, including, you know, something like a bottle of water, or a case of bottled water. So that was unfounded, it wasn't gouging, and that was also our conclusion. We had also looked at the matter as well. And she also mentioned and had no problem with me repeating that, at least at the time I talked to her earlier today, all of the incidents of gouging that they've investigated in Sonoma County have all turned out so far, as of my conversation with her, to be unfounded. So I think that that's a good sign. Available for any questions at the end of this presentation.
Thanks, chief. Director Themig?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I apologize for my attire, but our evacuation order was lifted at 5:57 this evening, so I haven't had a chance to go home, but officially go home. We received our notice to activate at about 4:00 a.m., after 4:00 a.m. from Deborah Nelson last Monday. It was interesting, because I was up that evening, and when I got home, I could see the fires, and about 1:20 during the windstorm, a significant part of our roof blew off. And so I'm like, oh, this is not good. And then when the phone rang at 4:00 in the morning, and it was Deborah's voice, I'm like, yep, I know what's up. So we mobilized, we got there about 4:30, we opened the doors at about 6:30 a.m., and I think we had our first evacuees around 8:00 a.m. that morning. We operated 24/7 through today at about 10:00 a.m. We were fortunate to have a Red Cross shelter, a Red Cross trailer that was being stored at the courtyard. I'd seen it over there before, and I was always like, whoa, what's that for? You know, do we really ever need that? That was instrumental in getting us operational. It had cots, it had blankets, it had supplies in it, and it was really helpful. This is an image of one of the rooms that we had set up with those cots that Monday, actually. We weren't sure we were going to need them, and it turned out that we actually needed almost all of them. Our operations were coordinated by the City, not by the Red Cross, although we had their support in terms of supplies. The Red Cross was overwhelmed in Santa Rosa, so we really took the lead and did that ourselves. Over the course of the week, we served 268 people. We are supported with an incredible team of county staff. National Guard was there throughout the week, and this amazing volunteer pool who came out of the woodwork. We had a list, and we were just adding names to the list of people who wanted to help out, so that was a really, really amazing part of this. In addition to that, we received donations of food and supplies all week long, from restaurants, from individuals. restaurants, from individuals, from, uh, other businesses. It just was a continual flow of what we needed to operate. So we didn't have to focus on that part of the logistical, um, elements. Um, over the course of those three days, uh, we provided three meals a day, thanks to those restaurants. We had showers available at the swim center. Um, we received regular updates, uh, both by CAL FIRE and also by our own public safety folks, uh, from Jason and Kevin. And we actually, uh, livestreamed a number of those, which is Ben, uh, I think Ray will talk about how powerful of a tool that is and how simple it is to utilize to get information out. Uh, we had medical care, we had, uh, doctors, nurses, we had, uh, National Guard nurses who were there, um, just a, a whole host. Um, we also had counselors who were on site, who talked to several individuals. Uh, we were pet friendly. Not every shelter is pet friendly and that was certainly an asset for folks. Um, we, we really provided a place, uh, for people to connect with family and friends and hopefully they had, uh, through the course of this, a chance to, um, rest. You know, one of the things that I think my biggest takeaway was that this was like a living organism over the last seven days. It, it, it evolved and it changed depending who was there and what their circumstances were. Um, and, and we had a chance to, um, meet people who lost everything and meet people who didn't. And it was really, really interesting, uh, and grateful to be, uh, supportive of those folks. Um, we were a temporary home. I think there were a few folks who'd like to make it their permanent home. So those folks had to move on today and fortunately their homes were, uh, okay. I think, uh, there was a couple from Geyserville now that the evacuation is lifted, but I think there were some that would like to stay.
Thank you, Director Themig.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and the City Council. Um, can you hear me? So the main aim, uh, the main goal I wanted to provide the city is to communicate to our community through a variety of channels with a variety of useful news and information. And you can see some examples there. They include the evacuation advisory, fire updates from CAL FIRE and updates from, um, Fire Chief Boaz and Chief Burke. Livestream videos from both CAL FIRE, Sonoma County Sheriff, as well as our own livestream videos. Uh, I think we provided two or three at least. And other useful info, including FEMA assistance, um, how to deal with smoke inhalation, that kind of information. So I tried to post every couple of hours, um, throughout the week, every single day. And we have three main city Facebook pages. So it's the City of Hillsburg, Fire Department and Community Services. We also have a fairly new index store page, which has been very active and also posted information on our city website. Um, I also provide, provide information on what's happening in Hillsburg and to our local paper, the Hillsburg Tribune. Um, we alerted residents several times via NICSOL and we contacted local media, um, with our news as well as corrected some incorrect information. So we're finding that our audience has grown. It's not just people here in Hillsburg or Sonoma, but it's people from across the country. People from New Jersey, Texas, New York. Um, so you'll, I won't go through the, the numbers there, but you'll see that, you'll see some eye-popping numbers. Um, and our information was not just shared by our own residents, um, on Facebook, but also publicized, um, via local news media. So the last thing for now is Josie Gay and a crew of volunteers, including Pembroke Studios, has put together this one-stop-shop resource for evacuees and for people who want to volunteer and help. It's www.norcalfireresource.com. And, um, the page is live now. It's still being populated, but it should be fully operational in the next few days. And on a personal note, um, I want to say that if it wasn't for the good cheer and the open communication, um, by all the department heads, um, the city manager and assistant city manager, I wouldn't have been able to do my job. So a big thank you to them. And I'm open to questions.
If I could just jump in real quick. So, um, having been through two of these types of events, as far as opening the EOC, one was the third day on the job with the flood back in, I think, 14. And then this event, um, really started Monday morning about 1:30 when my daughter walked in the door and said, hey, Fitch Mountain's on fire. And I said, I don't think so. I'd hear from the chief, but it turned out, of course, being farther down the, down, down the road. Um, you have an incredible staff. Just really committed to what they're doing. And on that, you can have questions.
Thank you, Rhea. Any questions from council? Councilman Niokus?
Uh, you know, um, I've kind of touched, alluded to it before. I, I was there from, uh, eight o'clock, uh, Monday morning and checking in throughout the week. Um, and I, I just, it's, I, I feel so proud of you all. Um, I have some, you know, I, I think maybe what I should do is, is, I'll let you guys talk, but I think what I like, I'd like to hear is what, um, what, what, what areas do you think we could, where, where we could improve? Uh, not we, but maybe like what, where, where we can reach out, well, maybe we, but also where we can reach out. Um, because I think there's some, there were some real challenges with, with, like I say, just as, as an example, NICSOL.
I think, I think the biggest challenge we had was communication the first three, two days. The majority of our community relies on Comcast and Verizon. And I know it was about 2:30 in the morning because I was watching the television and it went blank, trying to get some news. And we didn't go back up until two and a half, three days later. And with so much of our community relying on Comcast to get their information, um, and I was on the phone with the Comcast rep the very next Monday afternoon, noon, I believe, or Tuesday morning, um, trying to find out, you know, what's going on, why, what's the delay and the challenges. There was one feed coming through, uh, Santa Rosa to Windsor that was obviously damaged and it took them that much, that long to get, to brought back up. So the, the questions we will have moving forward with Comcast's redundancy and, and why, why is that? Well, you know, if we rely on that communication, um, so greatly, and, and we need to have better, more redundancy and, and we'll, we'll be having conversations with them, with that. The other issue is, is Verizon and, and Terry, I believe, spoke with the Verizon rep today and has a better understanding of, of some of the challenges they had. But with the city relying so mu, our residents relying so much on those two, those two ways of communication, it really shows a weak point with regards to how we're able to communicate and how this community can get information, um, in those times. Because frankly, from Monday at about 2:30 in the morning until, I want to say, was it Wednesday morning when Comcast came back up, if I remember correctly? Um, my AT&amp;T bill on my streaming iPad is in the high because that was the only way we could get information. Um, besides what, of course, we were privy to with city staff, with Chief Boaz and going through CAL FIRE and working really closely with Chief Boaz and his team, getting the information out. And then, of course, working with Rhea, getting the information out through social media. Um, but I, I mean, I, I cannot tell you how committed your staff is. And again, it's hard to imagine what they're dealing with in Santa Rosa, what that city council and that city staff is dealing with, with so many people that were directly impacted. Um, I think we have had one employee lose their home. We have, I believe, three or four employees, um, who are in the fire area. They're not completely clear if they've lost their home. And we have about 12 who are in the mandatory evacuation area. Um, what we were able to do Tuesday, I think, is, uh, or Wednesday populated GIS map and then, um, of all our, all of our city employees and then lay the evacuation, um, grid over it and also lay the, um, the mandatory fire, fires on over it. So it gave us a really good sense, um, really pretty close on as far as what the direct impacts to our employees were. And then, of course, we were able to start reaching out through HR to help those that were directly impacted. I'm sure all of us have, have folks on our couch and our beds who have been displaced with this, this fire. But I think, um, the biggest, I think, one of the bigger lessons, at least from the city manager's perspective, is communication and how much we do rely on Comcast and, and Verizon and how challenging it can be for our community when those lines of communication go down. I'd be curious to, um, hear from the other folks.
Any other questions up here? So at this point, I'd like to open up to the public. Uh, is there anyone who has any questions or comments on this? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Ariel Kelly. I'm the Board Chair of Corazon Hillsburg and I'm also a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I wanted to share with you that, um, during the course of the last week, we set up a site in town to receive donations of goods that are coming from all over the country and donations of purchases from all over the world. Today, we opened our doors at 190 Foss Creek Circle, Unit K. It's the building just to the north of the post office on Foss Creek Circle. We're on the backside of the building facing the freeway and we have a very large warehouse that was donated to us by a, a great gentleman in town and the connection was made through both Joe Niokus and Dave Hagley. Thank you guys for being so wonderful and heeding the call of helping us find a space. We are no longer accepting donations because we have received such an abundance. Our donations are coming through specific centers all over Sonoma County who are acting as integrated hubs of goods in quantities that we have never even imagined. I called someone today and said, can we get some bottled water for the folks that are going back to Larkfield and can't drink their water? And they said, how many pallets do you need? I have four semis full that can head your way. And I said, oh no, I just need like, you know, 20 bottles of water. So, um, clearly there is a great outpouring of resources coming to our community. Um, we are very delighted to see that. Um, we opened the Hillsburg Free Store is what we're calling it. It's a free tail location, no donations, just shopping. And we're open 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. It is powered completely by community volunteers. We created a Facebook page called the Hillsburg Free Store. We have a link called signup.com. Through that link, you can sign up for a two-hour shift. It's basically like if you were working in a retail environment, folding clothes, assisting shoppers, there's just no checkout. People just walk out the door. However, when they come in, we make sure that they're registered for NICSOL. We make sure they're registered through the FEMA, uh, iPads that we have set up. We're fully set up to help register people for benefits. We have iPads donated from the county. We're on their integrated system. I don't really know how it works, but Liz Gore made it happen, so that's happening. And we have gift cards that are being donated. So every shopper that comes can get up to a hundred dollars a day in gift cards. And I assume will run out at some point, but we still have plenty. So please spread the word to anyone who's been impacted by the fires that the free store is available to them. We had about 200 shoppers today. A lot of people came in very sad, very just in dark places and we helped to make their days better. And a lot of people were very, very happy when they left. And, um, we have more items coming every single day. And so we have a list going. If someone comes, they're looking for a specific item, we don't have it, we write down their name and contact, we find it for them and we text them or call them when we receive it. We also have Spanish language translators available there. We don't have them all the time, but we're looking for more and we're working with the Hispanic Chamber to have translators. Um, a great number of folks who are coming into the site are monolingual Spanish speakers. And I think that's more or less. Oh, um, we will be doing a furniture event at some point down the road, uh, probably a one-day furniture event. And we will be doing a bicycle partnership with the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition for, uh, kids who lost their bikes. And thank you all very much for making this possible. And I think that's it.
Ariel, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Are you, um, what's going on with the Dia de los Muertos?
The Day of the Dead celebration that Corazon Hillsburg has planned in partnership with the city for Sunday, October 29th, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM is still going forward. We're meeting with Director Themig, um, to talk about details. Um, we will be raising funds towards, uh, disaster relief as part of the event. And we are hoping that, uh, for folks, if they want to come to like bring a gift card or bring a monetary donation, that we can give them something in exchange for that, like a T-shirt or we haven't yet figured out what that item is, but we're working on it. Uh, but we are hoping that it really is a gathering of our community to come together and strengthen resilience to say Hillsburg is still here, we're strong and we're here to support the rest of our county when they're in need.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Ken, welcome.
We need some kind of a system, alarm or some siren. Cause like I said, my mother's 96 years old. She doesn't have a computer, she doesn't have a cell phone and most of the houses around her are second and third homes. There was nobody around. It's a good thing that I'm here in town to watch her, but how many old people are in town in that situation? I mean, it's something to let them know that something terrible is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see you in one of those pictures on the, uh?
Yeah, that was me in the blue hat.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Don't tell anybody. So the radio turned out to be an incredible, incredible tool. Um, and I was standing, you know, standing there just writing everything down and Bruce Abenson was, uh, in the office with me the first day, I guess it was after we started, um, just fielding phone calls. And the volunteerism in this town absolutely blew me away. The list of people who showed up and wanted to do something was incredible. Um, Bulett was there every single day with dinner, every single day. I can now say that I've eaten at Single Thread and the Dry Creek Kitchen and a lot of places I would not ordinarily be, um, you know, have the resources to go to. But, um, the one thing I would say, and it's only a teeny tiny little negative, is that our ADA stuff, we needed to just, you know, accommodate our handicap folks a little bit better. We had a couple of folks in wheelchairs who ended up going home a little sooner than the evacuation. Um, they were advisory evacuations, but a couple of people in the Fitch Mountain area that weren't able to tolerate being at the shelter. Um, Glenn being one of them and my friend Nita being the other. Um, so that was, that was a little difficult, not being able to, to keep them there and keep them comfortable. But I have to say, um, the love in my heart for Director Themig has just burst open. This man, we are so lucky to have him. He did an amazing job. Our fire chief was incredible. His children were there with us, um, volunteering every day and, um, just we had people, you know, of all ages and all backgrounds that were able to use their skill sets. I was happy to use mine in the situation that we got into with the folks that just did not want to leave. And, um, we're still trying to find a place for her now. But, um, you know, I, I just feel so blessed to have been able to be there, um, for the whole thing and watch it all because this is something that is definitely very close to my heart with the inclement weather, you know, shelter that we're trying to establish. And actually last night, I was able to meet a wonderful man and his wife, who are the pastor, um, the pastors of the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, which I have a history with on, with another group that I work with. And he, he is very passionate about getting something together, um, along with, you know, myself and Reach for Home as far as taking care of our homeless in an inclement weather shelter situation because they've just remodeled their, their basement there. So for me, that was the gift that I got from this whole thing, uh, you know, along with everything else that was just incredible. And to see David there with his daughter the first day and Joe popping in. And, you know, I know that, that Sean, you know, had to make a decision for his children and his family that was, you know, a difficult one to make. To see Leah's name on the list of people who was offering a home and to see Bridget there last night taking pictures and kind of celebrating with us was really, really great. Um, you know, I just, next time I would encourage you to come, serve a meal, hang out a little bit more, talk to the people. I mean, I, I met some folks who lost their home in Night Valley the first day. It was, it was pretty, um, humbling to, to have that moment with them and to follow up with them. And, and I just hope that this, this model that we made, um, can be used going forward for other shelter situations where we get into a disaster type, weather type situation. So I think it, I'm a little surprised at how well it actually went and how much, yeah, I'm at the resources for food and, and, I mean, Corazon, thank God you're taking all that stuff because it was just, I didn't know where we're going to put it all. So thank you all so much for listening and for, um, you know, I'm just really proud to be a, a Hillsburg resident. Thank you.
Thanks, Rosie. Anybody else? Marilyn, welcome.
Thank you. Um, so I guess we realize that undocumented, um, residents, if there's, if there's no one in the family that's a citizen, can't apply for FEMA. And so there's been set up an Undocu fund, uh, for fire relief and, um, there's an event on the 28th. Um, I think it's at the Se, um, the Sebastopol Cultural Center. It's called Love and Justice, but it's, uh, it provides, uh, funds. It's called Love and Justice, but it's, it provides funds for the undocumented workers and their families. So, thanks.
Thanks for the heads up. Anybody else? Okay, I'll bring it back, the council for discussion. I think, you know, the outpouring of support, volunteerism, the incredible work done by staff is amazing. And I think that the discussions about this and kind of the after effects and what we can do to help is kind of the next thing that we'll be moving into. A lot of volunteers and other organizations in our town are obviously stepping up to the plate. And so that kind of begs to, begs to see, well, what can we do as a, as a city? So City Manager McHaleen, if you had a few words on that?
So yeah, I think actually Vice Mayor Mansell had a, had a good idea as far as being able to maybe have the mayor author a letter to the city residents about those that may have second homes or homes are not completely utilizing, that we could send that letter out and then be able to connect those folks who may have a need for housing, both short-term and long-term. If the mayor is willing to do that, then we could work with you on a letter.
I'd be happy to work with you on that. And sooner rather than later, maybe we can get it out tomorrow, hopefully.
Sure, we'll work on it as quick as we can.
So you're writing a letter on behalf of the city council that is appealing to the people that are second homeowners? And that doesn't mean second, well, the people that maybe even we know, City Manager, haven't been utilizing a lot of utilities and perhaps could be vacant owners. And I think that's what I really want to make sure is that we target rather than put it out to every single person. And that's just my need because after this morning's meeting, I mean, the question came up this morning at the county is how are we distinguishing between burn home folks and the already homeless? And I feel like the issue is that we already had a homeless problem and the people that we're appealing to, I think, if they're not in their homes in our town, can rent and make a pretty good amount of money on a rent. But it's been challenging. I've been calling for teachers and, you know, 7,500 in this town cannot get a four-bedroom, three-bath. So I am going to talk to the chief about price gouging because that's one of the issues that came up. And I'm glad to hear that we don't have any founded examples of that. But real estate will surely be affected by this because there's a scarcity already. So I'm really thankful that you will go ahead and draft a letter from our council to the Healdsburg community that might be perceived vacant homeowners. But if you want to put it out to everybody to support us at this time when we absolutely already have a housing crisis and we need to have rentals and they can get fair market rent or more because insurance companies pay for that. But we really need to try our best to appeal to the best in our community, the people that really do want to help. It's not about opening your home to everybody, it's helping somebody that's a teacher or somebody that's going to be opening the schools up, which we need to do. We need to open the schools. And City, before you do anything else, I know that was just directed, but City Manager, our schools are opening tomorrow, is that correct? The public schools in Healdsburg are open, you know?
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay, so our public school will be open tomorrow and I think Santa Rosa doesn't open until next Wednesday. So, and that's just hoping with everything. So thank you for writing that letter because I've been directed by people to ask for help from our city specifically about some vacancies that we may have up here that we can help people, not, not in a hotel room, but a home that they can reestablish themselves so they can be stable and help other people's children and people in healthcare and all the different first responders. Two police, or two fire people lost their houses in Windsor. I talked to Deb Fudge a few hours ago. And also Rachel Hundley in Sonoma said they're, they're losing housing and they're the vital people that are going to keep the momentum to get normalcy. So I hope our city can step up and write this letter and our council can support that. So Mayor, thank you for writing that tonight or tomorrow and seeing if we can get that out to the targeted audience that might really be able to help us if we appeal to them in a friendly letter asking for their support.
Just, just a point of clarification, the, the letter would be from the mayor and not from the council because if we made it from the council, then we'd have to vote on it. And since it's not on the agenda, so we would have to wait a few weeks. And I think that the urgency is such that I think that's, you came up with the best way to do it. And I certainly will work with the city manager to do that. So I just wanted to go around and see if everybody had any comments or anything. Councilmember Hagley?
Yeah, are you talking specifically about the letter or just in general?
No, 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 I think the letter, I think that's, that ship has sailed. But I think that just in general about the, you know, the presentation that we had from our various department heads and what's going on and what do you think? I mean, any kind of ideas or thoughts that maybe the, we could come back with other ways to help too? I know that there's some things we're working on, but...
Couple of things, before I get to that, I wanted to kind of add some comments here because I did go down to the community center first thing in the morning, the next morning. Like all of us, we got the early morning phone call. And, you know, it was incredible to see, you know, the board is all set, you know, the room is full, all the key people are there for the emergency operations center. And it's, it just, to me, to kind of echo what you said about being proud of our staff, but seeing, wow, the, you know, the training is paying off, the training that they've taken on the emergency, you know? And one thing that I really liked was that that emergency operations center was at the community center. Because when I was, you know, going, running for office, we took a tour and it was down at the police station. And I liked the fact that everybody was there at the community center. So you're walking by everybody that's, you know, coming and going and that sort of thing. And that was really nice. What I did was, and this is the other thing that I thought was just, you know, it's been echoed over and over about how our community comes together. That first morning, I wasn't quite sure what I could do because as a councilman, I was like, okay, what should I be doing? Should I be standing at the door, hugging everybody, welcoming them? Do I stay back and let the professionals, do I trusty out of the way? And so I looked back on, okay, what can I do in my background? And so after I met with City Manager and my daughter did, I dragged her around at these different meetings, but she had a great time and I thought it was important for her to see everything. After I met with City Manager, I stopped by Lamar's Hotel and sat down with Brian Summer, who was taking phone call after phone call and trying to record a voicemail message, but he kept getting interrupted phone calls. Talked to him and said, "Hey, can you reach out to all of the members of the HTID to do a list of available hotel rooms?" Because he said, "I'm getting cancellations. I have rooms available. How can we get this?" And so then I met with Ria and started coordinating that with Heather as well because at that point, I think City Manager was too busy. And so my point of contact was Heather and Ria. And I started getting emails from the Chamber and from Brian of, "Hey, this hotel has this many rooms available." And then I would forward those on. The other phone call I made was to the Political Affairs Director of NORBAR, North Bay Association of Realtors, "Hey, can you guys get started on some kind of consolidated list?" And, you know, the thought was maybe through, I think it's called Berry's, the MLS that they have for up here, to start gathering that information. And it's kind of gone out. But one after the other, there was zero hesitation. And it just, just made me so proud to live in Healdsburg and how everybody was kind of working together and trying to, you know, I had Realtors calling me, "Hey, I have this, this place available." Try to place, you know, city employees and that sort of thing. So a couple of things in terms of ideas, you know, and I don't know how we could do this, but right now, as I understand it, the people that have insurance, they're being placed in hotel rooms. I have quite a few friends that lost their homes in Fountain Grove, they're in hotels all over the place. But we're, as we look to how can we help on a longer-term basis, one of the ideas is maybe a temporary release of zoning and density restrictions for residential, commercial and downtown residential areas for maybe RVs and non-permanent housing solutions specifically related to the, to housing fire victims. And I want to make sure that this, there's a way that maybe we can ask staff to come back with a recommendation on how we do that because I don't want to just open it up. I think we have to be careful. But I think if there's a way that we could offer priority to either city employees or people that, you know, not just city employees, but the employees of our local businesses that maybe have benefited and lost homes, that there's some way we can do that. We've seen the Amazon boxes that have been going all over Facebook and, but maybe it's just, you know, RVs or something like that. And it's, maybe there's somewhere, some way that we can fine-tune how we do that and a process. And maybe that's something that could come back to us at the next council meeting on November 6th. You know, I would want it to be limited to fire victims, maybe people who have lost houses. And then we could cooperate with the property owners for hookups, utilities, for temporary housing. I mean, there's a bunch of, it's not something I don't think we can vet here, but just in concept, I wanted to kind of see what your thoughts were that maybe then we could, you know, come back with a recommendation.
So just to clarify, County Council's working on that for ordinances around parking. And I think I said, Sam, our city attorney's in charge because that was the meeting today. I just want to clarify, they're going to be doing a lot of emergency, what they say, urgency ordinances about safe parking in the city, county churches. They're going to be revisiting lots of things around, like the mobile home parks have been displaced. They're looking for, for changes in policies right now that will relax standards like that. So the county's actually working on all that, but I don't know if that implies that we have to go with them, but I'm letting you know they're working on that.
Vice Mayor Mansell was correct. I've been on the phone today with a colleague of mine who works for the county and they are planning to have an urgency ordinance on, I think she said their October 24th agenda? Is that right? That does exactly what Vice Mayor Mansell does. It relaxes some of their zoning ordinances so that they can accommodate the needs of fire victims. Similar to what you were saying, Councilmember Hagley. So I will certainly maintain contact with her to find out what the county does. It's, I don't, depending on what they do, will determine how it affects, if at all, Healdsburg. We may, if we want to do something somewhere, we may have to do it separately.
Okay. Because I've heard different comments about, okay, we should loosen up Airbnb laws and some, you know, some of the regulations that we have around that. For me, I look at this website that we have and I think it's great that we have this consolidated resource list so that, you know, along with the mayor's letter saying, "Hey, if you have something available," I don't think we need to modify the Airbnb rules that we have in place now because we have a consolidated list. If somebody has a room, there you go, we can match somebody with you. And that's, that's kind of been happening, so, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Niokas.
Oh, yes. I mean, I enthusiastically like your, like the, the concept of really going, going to staff and saying, you know, "You guys know what we, what the challenges are. I'm open, we can't solve it. We don't have, you know, we, we have some thoughts, but I think you guys are the real experts of how..." Look, Healdsburg is supremely lucky. When you really think about it, if that initial fire happened just a little bit further north, coming straight down to Fitch Mountain, I mean, Fitch Mountain could have been spewing sparks throughout the whole city. This city could be completely done. We are really lucky. I think we have like a, I think we have a moral obligation to start, to step up to the rest of Sonoma County. And we have a lot of resources, we have a lot of great people, we have a lot of great ideas. I'm, I would love to hear your thoughts on all kinds, from lots of different angles, right? We've got the, you know, the zoning ordinances. I think there's also, I was thinking that maybe even for the GMO, we've got, we've got a bunch of units that are being constructed, right? They're going to be finished pretty soon, right? We've got the 101 Dry Creek, we've got the units on Grove. How can we, we make some, some changes to GMO policies and procedures to give the first right of refusal to, to the, to the first responders, to, who've lost, people who've lost their homes? Healdsburg staff, you get the idea. What, 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 what changes can we, what, what policies, procedures, procedures changes can we make? That's just one example. I think that, that I would love to hear more ideas to bring back to the, to the council. What do you guys think about that? So that's one, one thought. Another thought I have is, I also, I like your, City Manager, I like your concern about the redundancy of the communication systems. I think that, you know, Comcast and Verizon, I think that they have a lot to answer for, to answer to. I also am concerned about the broadcast, the emergency broadcast system. I think that, you know, that, that we talked about the NICSOL being a little bit confusing and, 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 you know, what's the difference between an advisory and a get the hell out, you know, kind of come, and, and, you know, maybe a siren would be a good way, way to do, a good old-fashioned AM radio kind of way to do it. I think that, you know, this, the Amber Alert, we talked about this briefly, the Amber, the Amber Alert system, I'm not convinced that it's only targeted to the, to the county. I'd like to hear some very specific answers about whether that can actually be applied to, to targeted zones. Those are, so I think, and the other thing I want to ask, I think, in third, and I'll leave it at that for now, is we talked about the legal, what we can do as far as price gouging. Fortunately, we haven't really seen it, but I would like to understand a little bit more about that process, about what we as a, as a municipality can do to supplement or, well, to supplement or reinforce what, what the state already has.
So that, those are a lot of items. And I appreciate that. We can absolutely move forward on the 6th. The challenge with that is we have a work session on CUPs and HTID. If the council would want to move the CUP discussion to a later date and use this as a work session, because I was going to have planning staff who's going to be working on the CUP piece of it, this might be a good item to do under a work session. Correct. That was the hotel CUP work session. We were going to, we had scheduled for the 6th at 5:00. HTID, I believe, was going to be right after that. This item, based on what I'm hearing here, is going to take a lot of, which is fine, a lot of staff work to provide the information you're, you're looking for. I'm not sure we can do the CUP item and this at the same, at the same time, so...
So of course, I, you know, I asked for the CUP, I'm asking for both these things, I guess. So I'm happy to, whatever you guys feel is, as a consensus is fine. I'm thoroughly willing to postpone this, the hotel CUP. I think that's...
Are we able to work with you offline outside of this meeting on scheduling of future meetings?
Sure.
Okay.
Just to clarify...
Sally, you had some things to add.
Just wanted to clarify, what did you hear him say? What did you hear my fellow council member ask you to do just now as far as the, the other tasks? I wasn't clear what he, what you heard him say.
Well, there's a lot, there's lots of ideas which the council member discussed, there's lots of ideas which the other council member discussed. There's things coming down from the county which we don't know about until later on. And so the idea is to have staff go through all of that information and then provide recommendations or provide options, we're absolutely willing to do and we have, we have the capacity to that. My, my concern is, the other item, we had scheduled for a work session, this, what we're talking about right now is, is actually prime for a work session because it allows a more free, I don't want to call it free flow of information, but, but a different way to communicate that. And so if we're willing to push the CUP discussion into later, I'm not saying push it out indefinitely, but be able to talk about this and things we can do as a community with regards to zoning and other items, I think that might, we, might, might work.
So my comment was, the Sonoma County library system is not going to be reopening. That was stated today, but I don't know, maybe with our new library connection, we can find out more information, but apparently they can't staff it. And so I was just curious if we wanted to do something in a unique way. I don't know if it's okay, but we own the building, so the city of Healdsburg could maybe open the library because it's an amazing resource for people to be able to go into the library. And it may not be open because of the functionality of it being a county system. So I just raise that as a question, if that's an interest for anybody in terms of looking at opening a library sooner than the county.
How long are they saying it will be closed?
I don't know, they didn't say. They just said they're having problems staffing it, which I wasn't sure about that.
I could probably find out tomorrow. Councilmember Hagley, you had a question? Comment?
Just one more was, and this might be a quick answer that you could give, you know, when you come back, but Measure S funding. So going back to incentives to kind of dovetail with the mayor's letter. So if there's an incentive to help with maybe the utilities, is it, or the, you know, so say if somebody has a three-bedroom house with an empty room, to help incentivize that person, is there a possibility to use some of the, a small portion of the Measure S funds to help with rent costs or something for somebody? Again, it's somebody that's been displaced in Santa Rosa that either works or has some tie here locally. Does that make sense?
I'd have to go back and look at the language of Measure S.
Because it's kind of, we... Because it's kind of, we might be able to get it in under affordable housing to help kind of incentivize people to open their doors a little bit more than.
Yeah, I'd want, I'd want to go back and give you a better answer.
So I think we have a number of, a number of ideas here for, yes.
I'd like to speak briefly about price gouging. It will be brief. I know it's getting late. There's a state statute that prohibits price gouging. It's a penal co-provision. And it precludes prices being raised more than 10% for goods or services right after a natural disaster. And it is only in effect for 30 days after the declaration of emergency. And so here are the declaration of emergency that we're working with is the, excuse me, October 9th declaration by the governor. The city could do its own declaration, but there's really no need to. The governor already has. So since that statute is only in effect for those 30 days, if the city wishes to extend that statute so that it will be in effect for 30 additional days, we should do that at the next meeting, which is November 6th. So one thing that we can bring to you then is a resolution for you to consider to extend that statute. It's possible you won't need to. It's possible that the county will extend it. So you may not need to take any action at all, but that's one thing that we could bring to you so that you can consider it. Yeah, I think it makes sense to push the CUP discussion a little farther down and instead use the time to discuss what, you know, people have been throwing out an awful lot of ideas here and maybe just see, you know, which are the most promising ones that we can focus on. Might be a good topic for that meeting.
Thanks. Yeah. Yeah. So a lot of good ideas here. Just one thing I want to kind of close with is that before all this happened, the city manager and myself and Reach for Home and St. Paul's were working on a inclement weather shelter for people who didn't have a home even before this happened. And I just want to reiterate that, that we are going to continue to work on that. And we also were talking about an interim solution and then a long-term solution. And then, you know, this, this happened. And so I just want to put that out there that, you know, we have a population of about 75 people here in town that have never had a home in the last, you know, I don't know how long. And we need to think about them as well and kind of continue with, I mean, that's, that's something that we were talking about and moving towards doing for people here in Healdsburg. And I just want to keep our focus on that as well. Because I think that that's a really important part of this as well. So, and with that, I just want to.
Well, Mayor, what are we doing then? We're just going to wait for the next two weeks and then come back with an idea? Or do we have a plan for that?
The city manager and I and.
Okay.
Reach for Home.
You're working on that and we're not going to let it go.
We have a plan in place which we will be able to roll out with regards to the, the temporary winter shelter.
We're just working on the details. And so we will, our original intention was actually to report at this meeting, but because certain key people were out of town last week or the week before last, we weren't able to, to get it. And so now we're probably not even, I mean, hopefully we'll be able to do something at the next meeting, but maybe at one of our special meetings, we'll be able to talk about something and then also talk about, have a discussion about an interim solution for something a little bit more permanent. So.
Just really quick. So is city attorney going to come to us in two weeks about price gouging and have something for us? Is that correct in the next two weeks?
Well, yes. It depends on the county. City Manager McKellen pointed out that it depends on the county.
Okay.
It, it could be that the county passes something and extends the state ordinance so we don't need to. So it could be that I prepare something and you don't need to do anything about it. But in either case, I'll let you know.
Okay. So thank you very much. Thanks much to staff and all the people who volunteered out there. Excellent job. And, and I don't think we've heard the end of the, we haven't seen the end of this spirit. And I, I think in the future, there'll be a time for us all to get together and celebrate our community and everything that we've done to, to help those in greater need. So with that, I'll move on to item 9B, CalPERS Agreement Amendment. Assistant City Manager, Ippoliti.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and other council members. Heather Ippoliti, Assistant City Manager. Before you tonight is a resolution of intent to amend the city's CalPERS contract to provide for the Government Code Section 20516, employee sharing additional cost. The second recommendation is to introduce for first reading, waiving the reading of the text, an ordinance to amend the CalPERS contract and direct publication of a summary of the ordinance as approved by the city attorney. A little bit of background, the city reached agreement with the Mid Management and Professional Employees Association, the Healdsburg Police Officers Association, and the International Association of Firefighters for the period covering July 1 through June 30, 2020. As part of that agreement, the Classic Public Safety Members, as defined by PEPRA, agreed to share in the employer contribution to CalPERS. The groups agreed to contribute an additional 1% towards the employer contribution each year for the three years of the contract. The city's employer share is currently 19.723% for the Classic Public Safety employees. As of the effective date of the amendment to the contract, the employees will increase their employee contribution by 1% to 10%, thereby reducing the employer portion down to 18.723%. The contract amendment will cover 13 current public safety employees. The process, it's defined by CalPERS and the Government Code Section. Didn't make this one up on my own. Adoption of the Resolution of Intent tonight, the introduction and holding of the first reading of the ordinance tonight. Tomorrow, there'll be a ballot election by the employees affected by this amended contract. Then, at our next meeting on November 6, we'll hold a second reading of the adopted, of, of the ordinance and adopt the ordinance. And then 30 days later, 1210 is actually the first day of the payroll that we can actually implement this, and that's when the amendment would be effective. And that actually concludes my report.
Any questions for staff? Is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we, I'd be happy to go ahead and move that we adopt a resolution of intent to amend the city's CalPERS contract to provide the Government Code 20516, employee sharing additional cost. And number two.
I believe you have to do it in separate motions.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, that.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Neokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Okay. And I'd also like to move that we introduce for first reading, waiving reading of the text, an ordinance to amend the CalPERS contract and direct publication of a summary of the ordinance as approved by the city attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Neokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. That motion carries as well. Okay, moving on to item 9C, vacancies on the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. City Clerk, Kirill.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and council members. With two of the former commissioners on this senior advisory leaving town, created two vacancies on that commission. We have been advertising those vacancies and so far we have only received one interested applicant on one of the vacancies. Staff is reporting to council the status of that vacancies and recommending at this time the council form a subcommittee to interview the applicant following past practice. One option would be for council to forego that past practice and choose to appoint that person to one of the vacancies. Staff is also seeking direction to council as to continue to advertise for that position, for the other, other position. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Councilmember Gold?
Well, I would just ask Councilmember Neokas if to weigh in because you're our liaison.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. I was planning on it. I think I have interacted with Ms. Kemp and I'm absolutely comfortable having her onboard. She's really fun to be there. She's a good, good spirit, you know, very active, shows up. I couldn't, I mean, shows up as a, as a not, you know, not committee member, just shows up to the, to the meetings with thoughtful contributions. I'm perfectly happy recommending her for this, for this, for this role.
Any other questions? I just had one question before I open it up to the public. Are we allowed to appoint people in the audience?
Maybe they can file an application, you know, in two seconds and then you can consider that.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who has any comments or questions about this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back for action.
Well, I would move that we appoint Terry Kemp to the vacant position on the Senior Advisory Commission.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Terry Kemp is now on the Senior Advisory Commission. So moving on to item 9D, Sonoma County Library Commission vacancy. City Clerk, Kirill.
As you know, we belong to the Sonoma County Library JPA, and us being part of that membership, the city is entitled to have a representative on that JPA. The city council in 2014 appointed Mr. Grill to that position. On July 19th, Mr. Grill resigned from that being the city's representative, and his term ends July of 2018. The city council, or the city staff, when we received notice that of his resignation, we advertised the vacancy in the Healdsburg Tribune, on the city's homepage of our website, social media, and also an email blast was sent to our city's website subscribers. Additionally, the Sonoma County Regional Library included the vacancy on their blog. So far, only one position has been, one applicant has been received from Carla Howell. Again, staff is recommending the council, following procedure, form a subcommittee to interview the applicant. One, again, the council has the option. Two, forego that process and appoint Ms. Carla Howell to that vacancy that again will expire July of next year.
Any questions?
I just want to make sure, so we can just obviously accept this gracious offer of Carla Howell's and tonight, just make that decision and put her.
That's definitely council's option.
I have a question. So Councilmember Neokas, you posted something on your Facebook page about, hey, we could extend it. Did you get any feedback from anybody or no?
Well, from my wife.
So do you have to recuse yourself?
So, so, well, but I, I did also get other inquiries about like, what's, you know, what's it all about? You know, I posted links to the, to the description of the, of the, of the position. So that's, you know, that's, you know, my, my gut is, first of all, I am perfectly happy, you know, going with Carla. I think that, that, you know, in the, in the interest of engagement, I think there might be room for expanding beyond. I mean, I just think that there should be lots more people who would be interested in that. I'm kind of scratching my head why there weren't, and that's why I posted it. And maybe, maybe the next time around or something, we could look into reaching out to maybe parent groups, right? I think there might be a lot, a lot of interest in, among the schools and parents. And maybe, you know, I, I think you guys did a great job. Don't, don't get me wrong about reaching out. But I think that in the spirit of, of, you know, you know, it just seems to me that there would be more people applying. That's, so that's, those are my thoughts.
Well, that, that sounds like it might be worthwhile for the next opening, but, you know, from where I sit, Carla Howell's very well known to all of us as a very capable and very public spirited person. And I'm delighted that she's willing to take on this role. So I would just, I would advocate for accepting her quickly.
Well, with that.
Would you like to speak to us, Carla?
I'd like to open up to the public. Is there anyone here that's just to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back. And just my, my only comment, Argya, come on up.
Hi, Lauren Barnes, Healdsburg Junior High Librarian.
Keep the microphone up.
I'm too tall. Okay. I just want to say that I did pass on the information to some other people too, and it was, they were interested in finding out more about a lot of positions like this. Also just saying that is there a way, like, I'm really involved in the city, not as much as my husband, but I'm not on the city of Healdsburg email list, I'll say. But I follow the Facebook page and all of that. I, I think people started talking about, are there other positions and can we get new people in? Because sometimes, and I don't know what else is up besides senior commission and library, but we want to get more people and more names into the pot of people who are doing things for everything. And I think there was a lot of talk about having new people on city council was so wonderful, and there's lots of other places. I just think maybe we need to think a little bit more about getting the word out more. I'm not saying you guys didn't do a great job, but maybe thinking of new ways. So I put up what Joe sent, and then people did reply back to me about it. And they were asking what it is about, and they did start asking, what are there other things like that that might be available? So maybe there needs to be some thought about putting these things out more broadly. I think you would get more response for all of those positions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say, I'm so delighted to see a familiar face and somebody that I know who's lived in the community for a while. And I've served on the library, or not, not at the county level, but I've served just locally for one year. And I'm just really happy that we have somebody that wants to do it, that has some experience. But I absolutely echo that we need to, especially for the seniors, there's a grand population of seniors in this city, and we have to do a better job of engaging them. And I think that's what's so exciting about the public engagement that we hopefully are going to be doing about livability, because libraries to me are like right in the middle of a, of a livability situation. So I am very pleased to just support who is absolutely willing to do this. And I would echo Councilwoman Gold's comments. We have someone that wants to do it, that's very capable, and we're lucky. And let's accept that invitation, let's accept the, the offer and follow that for tonight until Paul Grill's tenancy is over, which I think is another year, right? Another year? I mean, his post though is another year. So what we're doing is filling a one-year post, is my point. So I'm delighted that Carla is willing to, Carla Howell is willing to do that.
So I, the library is one of the things outside of the city that I kind of have taken interest in and kind of put extra effort into that and the Sonoma County Parks. And I'm working with some folks on improving the kind of quality of the library commissioners in general. And I was really happy to see that Carla stepped up on this. And I have a feeling that nobody else applied because who would want to apply and, and be put up against Carla? I, I wouldn't. I wouldn't. So I think, I think that, so, you know, as an aside, I'm, I'm working on this countywide with some folks. And if you want more information on that, you know, you can talk to me outside. I'm going to be going to various city councils and the Board, Board of Supervisors and talking to them and specifically recruiting people from different communities to, because I think our, our library system is going through a transition, you know, with Measure Y and the passage of that. And there's a lot of things on the books. I've met with the CFO and the former director, the acting director, the board chair a couple of weeks ago. weeks ago and just, you know, have a real interest in, in having that system be strong for years to come. So I'd certainly support the motion to appoint Carla.
Yes, I'll offer the motion to support, to appoint Carla Howell to the empty position on the Sonoma County Library Commission.
Second. I have a, are, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carla, welcome to the, thank you for being our, our library commissioner. With that, we have no closed sessions or no written communications, so, meeting adjourned.